Good evening. I'd like to welcome you to our work session this evening. I hope everyone had a nice Thanksgiving holiday. I'd like to call this meeting to order. We have all seven members of the board present. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented? Motion by Mr. Blain, second by Ms. Phelps. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0 to approve the agenda as presented. Brings us to the pledge of allegiance. Ms. Phelps, will you lead us in the pledge? And that brings us to item three, superintendent's opening comments. Dr. Baker.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Thank you for being here this evening and for helping us to set the stage for the FY '20 budget development. Since I've been here, this has always been a traditional routine part of the budget season and really the kickoff. Certainly, if there's another way that you would like to kick it off in the future, I'm always open. But I want to thank our staff for their preparation, both working with me and together in preparing a wealth of materials and information that not only will they share, but hopefully it will give the board an opportunity to weigh in on and provide questions and feedback. You'll see, you'll notice that we are integrating a presentation on the specialty center concept that the majority of the board has seen at least a portion of. Tonight, we wanted to integrate it so that all board members can receive it and ask questions and also provide it publicly as we have many staff and other guests here as well. I'll share a little bit more about that when we get to that point in the agenda. Given the amount of the material that we have ahead of us, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to staff to begin with the draft of the FY '20, '20 to '20, '24 Capital Improvement Plan.
And may we have the floor computer, please? At this time, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Uppercow.
Thank you, Mrs. Gaines. Madam Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Baker, Dr. Martin. It's a privilege tonight to present the draft 2020, 2024 Capital Improvement Plan. And, Ms. Gaines, are you the guru of... Okay, good. Thank you. You know, I'm a male. I can't do two things at once. You're going to have to do that. I'll tell you when I do it. As you know, the Capital Improvement Plan, or CIP, is a capital budget and planning document prepared annually for the Spotsylvania County Public Schools. The CIP covers a five-year period, the upcoming year plus four years, and moves out one year each year. The CIP provides a forecast by which capital maintenance, capital technology, and capital transportation projects required to support the school division are planned, financed, and constructed. In terms of our timeline, tonight, we'll be presenting the draft proposal, obviously, to you. No action will be requested at this time. We're certainly anxious to hear your input and suggestions. The school board will approve the FY '20 operating budget and the CIP as part of that budget on February the 11th, 2019. And then, the school board will adopt the FY '20 operating budget, which will also include the CIP. And that would be on April the 15th, 2019. And just very quickly in summary, as you can see, the five-year totals are as follows by year. For transportation, for FY '20, 20, $4 million. Maintenance, $21.9 million. Technology, $3.1 million. For a total, for FY '20, 20, of $29 million. FY '20, 21, $3.8 earmarked for transportation, $12.4 for maintenance, and $2.3 for technology, for a total in 2021 of $18.5 million. And FY '20, 22, $4 million for transportation, $32.6 million earmarked for maintenance, $3.7 million for technology, for a total in 2022 of $40.3 million. And then, for FY '20, 23, $4 million for transportation, $12.9 maintenance, $3.1 for technology, and a total for 2023 of $20 million. And finally, for FY '20, 24, you can see $4 million earmarked for transportation, $6 million for maintenance, and $1.9 for technology, for a total in 2024 of $11.9 million. Now, that brings us to a five-year total for transportation of $19.8 million, for maintenance, $85.7 million, and for technology, $14.2 million. So, the total five-year Capital Improvement Plan at this time would be $119.7 million. So... As you can see, the available bond authority after FY '20, 19 is $66,986,000. Less the proposed list from FY '20, 20, CIP projects, and those are all projects across each category, of $28,989,696. Less a proposed list of FY '20, 21, CIP projects, and the total amount of $18,465,916. Which means, available bond authority, starting with FY '20, 22, would be $19,531,348. Now, that is of existing bond authority. However, the proposed list of FY '20, 22, CIP projects is $40,220,828. What does this mean? This means that additional bond authority is needed by FY '20, 20, and thereafter. The five-year CIP total from 2020 to 2024 of $119,664,986, less the available bond authority, the current bond authority, of $66,960, would equal a need of $52,678,026, which means we need additional bond authority and resources through FY '20, 24. Therefore, a potential voter decision for a new bond referendum would be anticipated in November of 2020. Also like to add that at this time, prior to the bond referendum, we will continue to monitor high school enrollments. And we'll reassess as needed based on what we see in actual numbers as they come in, as well as potential requirements for the specialty schools that you'll be hearing more about later. So... Let's review the components of the 2020, 2024 CIP. And we'll start with transportation. And if you're following along and cross-referencing this in your booklet, that would be, the transportation projects actually start on page 20 and give you more detail in the CIP booklet that you received this evening. Highlights during the five-year CIP for transportation include 121 replacement 77-passenger buses, 35 replacement special needs buses, six new 77-passenger buses, and six new special needs buses, auxiliary bus equipment, which are safety cameras in the buses, as well as nine replacement bus engines. Here's some additional highlights that I think are of note. The average age of our fleet is 6.4 years, which has reduced the maintenance cost of our fleet. And as we purchase newer buses, we're able to make sure that they are, they come with standard air conditioning for all of our new buses. The recent number of annual bus purchases has allowed us to successfully program pilots for alternative fuel buses. This would include propane and gasoline buses. As you know, most buses are fueled with diesel. So, this has given us an opportunity to look into some alternatives as well. We have 204 buses with full air conditioning. 300 buses of our 378 in our fleet are used on a daily basis. 72% of our fleet has three or four, excuse me, three or more passenger compartment cameras for safety and security, with four camera positions now being the standard for all new buses. And we have secured a lease agreement for Sonovia GPS for our total fleet of buses that provide track and trace capabilities, diagnostics, and ultimately will enable us to more effectively monitor time management. Now, let's take a quick overview of maintenance. And the maintenance projects begin in your booklet on page 23. As you know, the renovation and expansion of Cortland High School has been a major highlight. We are actually moving to Phase Two of the renovation process in December. I believe that you're going to be invited, either formally or informally, to take a look at the facility. I think you're going to be impressed. For those of you that have had that opportunity, I think you're going to be more impressed now because it's really coming together. Remember that the new renovated facility will provide for 300 or so additional students and as well, a state-of-the-art learning environment for all of our students there. We're also calling for a renovation and expansion of Spotsylvania Middle School. And as you look through the project list, you'll see that that's slated to begin in the year 2021, 2022. Other projects include, as you know, but they certainly are not limited to, major repairs, replacements, and the maintenance of school facilities and infrastructures. And I must add, our safety enhancements have really, you can really see a difference from before our bond referendum in 2014 and now. Again, you can see specific school listings by year, starting on page number 23 in your booklet. The maintenance of school facilities is paramount to support the efforts of safety and instruction for our students and staff. Proactive maintenance, coupled with repairs and replacement of systems and structures, ensures the longevity of the division's schools and facilities. And the division's comprehensive CIP plan, as you know, is the primary tool for protecting the division's investments in school facilities. Now, let's go to technology. And the technology projects, just to reference your booklet, may be found starting on page number 33. The highlights for technology include the replacement of devices, replacement of switches, safety and security upgrades. And that will include a new program to, that will enable us to utilize keyless access control at our schools. Update wireless infrastructure, refresh school servers, and provide future-ready libraries. The technology CIP continues to provide the resources needed to maintain and improve instructional and support technology through the replacement of computers, servers, cables, blade servers, controllers, laptop computers, switches, and other equipment. An updated technology infrastructure allows students, staff, and parents to access more resources and communicate more efficiently and effectively utilizing the latest applications. I would also add that the safety components are also contained in the technology CIP as well as in the maintenance CIP. Now, we'll move on to student enrollment data. Let's discuss and review some important student enrollment data that has come, has come to light, but really, it's not a secret. We've had this information for many years. If you look at page number 41 in the CIP, you will see the historical and projected student enrollments. And if you look at this particular chart, you can see that in 2009, we actually had more students than we do now. And you can see how enrollment has fluctuated somewhat over the years here. I would also ask that you reference the CIP introduction section, which is on pages four through eight. Mr. Treyer's done an excellent job of explaining some of the factors that are contributing to our current enrollment, but also where we see ourselves going in the near future. You may also want to reference page 44, which is the eastern elementary region capacity and actual enrollment comparisons. In particular, look at Parkside Elementary School. Page 47, which is the central elementary region, you may want to look at Robert E. Lee Elementary School's capacity enrollment figures. Page 48 contains your middle school enrollment and capacity. In particular, Spotsylvania Middle School and Battlefield Middle School are of note. And page 49, the last page here, the high school enrollments. We already know that Massiapanx High School is over capacity. They want to look at those numbers and where they're projected to go, and also the Riverbend High School, starting, I believe, in '22, '23. So, at this time, I think I'll turn things over to you, Mr. Dr. Baker.
We'll go ahead and pause before we transition and see if there's any questions from the school board.
Mr. Twig.
So, back at that first slide, you showed like $6 million, minus $6 million, minus $6 million, and then 19 left for '22. Right there, please?
Yes, sir.
Or minus 28, 18, and then leaving 19. So, all of that will be excess in our, that exists in our present CIP expenditure or coffer, so to speak? So, we have X dollars to available in 2020 when we are, you say we want to ask for a bond referendum in 2020. But I, that chart tells...
In order to fulfill our five-year project totals, we'll need that bond referendum in 2020.
Which runs from 2020 to 2024. But this is saying that we'll have, we're going to be spending $28 million existing dollars in 2020, $18 million existing in 2021, and have 19 left to spend beyond.
Mr. Twig, I believe that the confusion lies in fiscal years versus calendar years. I'm not positive, but when Mr. Uppercow is referring to 2020, he's talking about November of the year 2020. Fiscal year 2020 is next year's budget, the budget we're talking about. So, by FY, I guess it would be FY '20, '22. It would be actually, we would be in FY '21, but we would be planning for FY, so it's a, really a year off, so...
Or a year ahead, as far as...
Yeah, yeah. So, I just wanted to make sure that that, that part is clear. And again, the reference to bond referendum, I want to make sure the board is clear about this. That is because, at this point, that has been the way we have been able to support capital improvements over a fairly long period of time. If the board wants to explore other options, then that's certainly something that you can discuss, but that has been the primary way that we have funded these projects.
Right. And our present five-year bond runs to when?
Our present bond? Well, it, are you talking about the new proposals for '24?
Several years ago. How long, what was the year layout, outlay for that?
Well, we will be, we will have funds, although not fully enough funds to can, to do everything that we want to through 2021.
So, we'll be spending existing dollars into 2021? Yes?
It would either be that, or it could be stretched out for, and I'll just say this, it could be stretched out for a five-year period. You would just have to scale back the projects significantly on an annual basis.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First question I wanted to ask is, I know we're discussing or changing our concept for specialty schools. So, the projections that we're making for maintenance and transportation and, for our CIP are in line with that scheme of operation? Is that, is that fact correct?
They don't currently include major spending for the specialty schools, if that's what you're asking. Are those included in the projects?
Yes. Because if we're trying to get our hands around the dollars that are required, it has to match up with the instruction that we're trying to prepare. And so, my question would be, especially, you know, when we're talking about the transportation needs, the transportation needs are going to be significantly increased with, you know, specialties where we're traveling, moving kids from a variety of different locations based off of their interests, not necessarily where they live. That's going to have a significant impact on our need for buses. So, I just wanted to find out if that was a projection based off of our current setup, or is it based off of the instructional intent?
Right now, this is based off of our current.
Off our current.
With the caveat that prior to the bond referendum, that we would reevaluate exactly what we would need as those things are more formally fleshed out in terms of the specialty schools.
And I understand, we haven't decided yet, but I think that we should be able to look at both courses of action because it's going to have a substantial cost, I'm sure, and we need to know what that is. And I think it should line up with the instructional intent. So, that's just, that's just one part. And the other thing I wanted to ask, in our CIP, I made several comments from the DIAS and also with folks on, on a one-on-one basis about a notorium. Have we even, have we considered that, a notorium, as part of the CIP package?
At present, we have not.
Have not? Okay. And if we did, would we have an idea of the cost to a notorium?
We would need to get back to you on that. I know that we, in the past, as we have discussed it, we've had some preliminary figures, but I wouldn't be comfortable, at this point, you know, reviewing those with you, but we can certainly bring that back to you.
Yes. I'd like to see that. And then, I, I think what we have to do is be able to make sure that whatever we're asking for lines up with the instructional intent. But then, we need to have a total amount that we would present to the public and say, this is what we're going to ask for to meet our instructional needs. So, those are my questions. Thank you.
Dr. May.
From what Mr. Braswell was commenting, you know, and I'm thinking with the specialty schools and everything, it's going to become an operational cost. And if we're running right now 300 buses a day, but we have 378, it may be that we tap into some of those 78 to make it operationalized. Doesn't necessarily mean we have to increase our CIP. Could be increasing operations, but not necessarily increasing CIP. But if it is going to increase the CIP, there's, I think what Mr. Braswell is saying, then we need to add that into, factor it in. But I don't see that necessarily right now.
We've got the buses. I think the issue, as you're saying, would probably be the drivers and how we work out the routes.
Correct.
The manner in which the students are transported.
Correct.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. The, with the possibly having to go for another bond authority, does the, does the county actually have borrowing authority? Or, because I thought I have heard the supervisor say, they're kind of tapped out, they don't have borrowing authority right now with the bond agents or whatever, and I could be completely wrong about that. But I think that's something we need to make sure that we know that if we do, if we are going to take a referendum to the voters, that they're, unless it's on us, and then we have the authority, but make sure that we are able to borrow if, if that's what it comes to for, up to the voters. That was only my, my concern because I know we're going to run out of this money before this CIP is done. So, we're going to need something. And then, along with GPSs, you said, and I know we, they came to us just a couple months ago for a vote. Diagnostics. Are the GPSs, do they di, make diagnostics on the bus itself? Are they, so they are? Thank you. I see you nodding back there.
Each bus is installed and has its own individual. So, we can track where they are, we can track how much time is spent, various functions, idle time, that kind of thing.
Like a need of an oil change or anything like that?
Ultimately, you could actually, and we're not there yet, but you can actually use time and attendance, which is basically your payroll, do the same program. But again, we're not there yet. It takes some time to get to that point.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps.
I have a question, a couple, actually. The, I noticed the bus engine replacement. Those are quite expensive. Why would we do a bus engine replacement?
Well, rather than buy a new bus, sometimes you can replace the engine, use the same, same bus. It's a lot more cost-effective that way.
And are those the older buses that don't have...
Typically, it older buses. Every now and then, you'll blow up one that's, you know, everything else is fine, it's not that old, but something goes wrong. It's a whole lot cheaper to replace the engine than it is to buy a new bus. That's, Mr. Greenlaw's expertise comes into play on that, so...
And so, what about the LED lighting? Did we switch out all the LEDs?
LED lighting, if you look at the project list on the maintenance school, year by year, school by school, you'll see that the LED lighting is phased in there for those schools that have not yet received it. And that, that goes through the whole five-year CIP.
Do you have the savings on that yet? Or did we see any savings?
I can't give you a figure tonight. We do feel, obviously, that it's saving. We've had a weird, you know, nothing's ever black and white, unfortunately, but with the kind of weather that we've had in terms of humidity, and then last summer with the heat that we've had, it's a little bit more difficult to say, hey, this cause, you know, cause and effect, hey, we changed these out, and we've saved X number of dollars. But we do believe that we have saved, and I'm sure that Mr. Hockaday, if you give it a little bit of time, can work those numbers for you.
Oh, be good. And so, I recall something that you just mentioned about Massiapanx. I know I brought it up before up at the DIAS as far as at capacity.
Yes.
So, okay, so that's a factor.
I mean, it's, it's been at capacity, and we've taken some measures to repurpose some areas in the school. But we also have, as you know, the redistricting effort, which I'll be able to come back and tell you more about in the future. But now that we have our numbers, our enrollment figures, we can go from here. And I'll be reporting back to you, I think in January, I don't remember the exact month, but we'll have some information to share with you about the high school redistricting effort. And that would be designed primarily to reduce some of the enrollment at Massiapanx.
Have we done the fields? I was looking at the expensive, the, well, the costly price tags, the athletic fields. Have we done any...
Are you talking about the turf?
The turf fields, the artificial turf fields? Have we...
They're also in the CIP on the project list. I believe Massiapanx is in, not this year, but next year, as well as Riverbend. And again, I refer back to the, to that project list.
And so, noratorium, that's a swimming pool, right?
Yes.
Notorium.
I had to learn that from Mr. Braswell because it was one of those $5 words, and I'm a nickel guy, you know?
Do we have this, do we have this swimming pool in here?
We do not.
Oh, oh, okay.
We do not have that.
Okay. I guess I'm lost, so we don't have this swimming, okay. I was just trying to follow along, figuring out where we had a swimming pool, but we don't. Okay.
Right.
All right.
Or at least not yet, depending on where we go.
Ms. Shelley.
I forgot a question I wanted to ask. Do we have, so we have our number, our projection, our enrollment, we have our, our historical and the projections. How, do we have anything that says this was the projection and this was the actual? And I know we have it, but how far back could we get that data? I just want to know how our projections have been over the, say, the last 10 years?
I just want to know how our projections have been over the, say, the last 10 years or so.
We do have in the book simply a comparison between last year and this year. And that includes the projections and how, how close we were. I believe it's in blue in the last column and I'm not looking at it, but we do have that. Now, you're talking about several years going back and how close have we been? I'm sure that we could get that information. I don't know if, if it's in one source now, but it could be, it could be gotten, so to speak.
I'm not in any hurry for it. It would just, just kind of be something to see later. No hurry. I'm, I'm not asking, you know, given a deadline or anything like that. Just might be something to look at later. Just to see kind of where have we projected? Because I know this goes with the county as well. Just where our projections were and where we were actually. No hurry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any more questions on what's been presented? Mr. Blaine?
I have a lot of interest in the fine arts. And there's a need for instruments in that area. And they don't come under this category generally.
Correct. You talk about musical instruments?
I recognize that.
Right.
But I want to be sure that we are not forgetting that end. In addition, I'm not familiar and do not know whether or not we are in need of new practice rooms or places in the schools that have to be remodeled or redone in order to properly handle the number of musical kids and artistic boys and girls. And we forget, we spend a lot of money on, on sports, which I'm 100% in favor of. We've reduced now and eliminated the fee for participating. But I'm concerned that we now need to shift gears a little bit and look at the needs of this other group of youngsters because what they're learning in the musical field, the instruments that they're learning to play, they will be using those in their daily lives for the next 50 or 60 years. It's a much longer range benefit to them than the short range. And I just want to be sure that we don't lose track of those needs as we look at the, the physical requirements here.
Right. So, if you're asking, have we included the cost for practice rooms? And I think you're going to hear, I know you're going to hear more in the future tonight about the specialty schools and specifically about the performing arts one. To answer your question directly, we have not included that in yet in terms of architectural modifications and things of that nature. But I hear you.
Thank you.
Clearly, we have the whole booklet to read over, but is anybody primarily ready to move on? We are, I think, done with CIP. We can move on.
Thank you.
Board members, I wanted to, I guess if, when that comes back up, I wanted to introduce the next section to you. But given some of the questions and feedback that you've already provided, I want to try as briefly as I can to, to either provide or to reinforce some history and context before Ms. Flannard and Mr. Wolf share this information. In 2013-14 school year, the county had approached, county officials had approached us about their need and understanding we would have a need to develop a bond referendum that went to the voters in, in November of 2014. When we began to develop that, we formed a task force. And some of you may have heard this before, so again, I apologize, but I just want to make sure that everyone is on the same page and you have a context to view some of what you're going to see in a few minutes. When we did that, we had a cross-section of staff and leadership that were looking at not only the need to maximize and preserve our current facilities and our capital improvement expenditures, including transportation and technology. But we led that effort by looking at what do we want the future to look like for our students? And we also knew at that time, as much as we talk about dollars being scarce today, going into FY '20, we were still in a position at that time of cutting budget as a primary development strategy. So, I want to make sure that as we put these years together and as we look at this concept today of specialty centers, that we began to look at specialty centers back at that time as, really for two reasons. One, I have a sense of urgency, and I think most folks that work alongside me have a degree of urgency about making sure, and this is again, even prior to the development of profile of a Virginia graduate, we began to look at what high school needs to look like to develop our students in terms of both their career and college readiness. Again, this was in alignment with our division strategic plan. But to make sure that they were skill-ready, that they had many viable opportunities for a productive future. And while the traditional high school setting provides many opportunities, it has historically been primarily achieved through standard credits in certain areas with minimal selection beyond the core areas that are required. And in essence, it is about having the, demonstrated the knowledge to be able to gain a diploma through the amount of seat hours you put in in a course and making the appropriate grades, which, that's how we all received our educations. And much good has come from that. But as we look into the future, we see that in terms of both career, college readiness and workforce readiness, we need our students to be leaving high school with what they can do, just as much as what they quote-unquote know. And as we looked at the concept of specialty centers, we wanted to make sure that each of our high schools, and this again, goes back to what we were thinking at the time, had something that was unique to that school. So, we, you know, began to look at where the job opportunities were going to be. And a lot of this Carol and Keith are going to share with you. But I want to make sure that it's clear that when questions come up about a future bond referendum, that our focus hasn't been on developing a new bond referendum. Mr. Upperco was sharing that, again, you'd understand that if we enact this current five-year plan and it's, in its current draft form, then we are not going to have the capacity to move past 2022. In terms of how we would have future funding and the development of a bond process, what I'm asking our staff to do, and it's difficult for some operations in particular, because they want to figure out all the logistics and all the costs well ahead of casting and developing the vision. So, I'm going to ask you as, as best you're able to, understanding that you have to, we all have to be accountable to our community and our taxpayers, that we have a, I guess, what we call a backward design, that we begin with the end in mind in looking at what the high school experience and the opportunities could be for our students as we have currently conceptualized it. Then, the how, the when, and what it will require, I think, can come into a clearer focus, including the development of the next bond. However, if this board or the community at large or staff does not want to see a change of this kind, then I would not want to have worked out innumerable logistics when what we may need to be looking at is not just the addition of costs. And I'm quite aware that, that cost is everything in some folks' minds, and I get that. But sometimes we need to shift cost rather than add cost on top of. And so, I would also ask you to keep that in mind even as we look at transportation. For example, as we look at specialty centers potentially being at each of our five high schools, there is also another option of, among many, where you could develop within a future bond, a, a new specialty center that could centralize much of the pathway opportunities that are going to be shared with you again this evening. So, I'm wanting to make sure that before we proceed further, that it's viewed with an open mind and that it is not viewed with the idea that something is already set in stone. It is still at a conceptual visionary level and we are not presenting it in any other way this evening. So, once folks are done, we'll certainly take questions. But I want to make sure everyone is rest assured that no final decisions have been made except for we have been able to develop in the short term, International Baccalaureate is just one example, but they'll share with you some other examples of pathways that we think are viable and that we can seize that opportunity in the near future. But the breadth of what's going to be shared again will require significant board input and support and in some ways, guidance to move to the next level. So, when we began this concept, in just a few minutes, Ms. Flannard is going to share with you another view of our student enrollment. And as, as recent as this afternoon, I was answering questions about how we need to be looking at redistricting across our school division because of growth. And so, I think you've already seen again that we are not growing. In fact, when we show Ms. Shelley the, you know, projections along with the actuals, what I've seen over that period of time at a glance is some hit and miss. You know, one year, we're projecting under, the next year, we're projecting over. And it's been a very difficult, challenging time period to be able to sustain any momentum. And as long, and I'll close with this, as long as we are primarily funded at all levels on a per pupil basis and not on a need basis and not on a commitment to increased funding from any level, then we are going to be at the mercy of our enrollment figure, which is still, over a 10-year period, pretty much stagnant. So, what she's going to share with you is, we may not be growing in our numbers, but that does not mean that we are not growing in our needs and in our challenges that our students are coming to us with. And so, I hope that you can see in terms of the, the budget development, another concept other than just how many students we have. Ms. Flannard?
Thank you, Dr. Baker. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Martin. There we go. Just to remind the board, I know that Dr. Upperco did share the enrollment trends from a longer period of time, but this is just the overall numbers for the past five and 10 years. And you can see that from five years ago to our current enrollment, we're actually 99 students, so just about 100 difference between those two. The interesting aspect of our makeup of our students is what Dr. Baker was referring to. When you look at the reporting categories, the reporting categories are categories that are earmarked from the state. And so, this is how our students are acknowledged by their parents upon enrollment. And if you look at this chart, the interesting aspect on two or more does have 2010 next to it. That is because that was the year that the VDOE determined that reporting category to exist. So, it didn't exist prior to 2010. That's why that is in parentheses. And you will note in highlighting our student population changes that the most change that we have recognized is the growth in our Hispanic population over the past 10 years. This is another perspective to date that is a different way to look at the information from a previous slide. And yet, this is another perspective that we can look at in regards to reporting categories. These reporting categories are most familiar to the board in regards to our free and reduced lunch as well as our state testing categories. So, you will see that our special education population 10 years ago was just slightly higher and then dipped down and again, is back up to 13%. Our gifted population has maintained over the past five years and grew from 10 years ago. Our English learners has grown to 7%, up from 3%. And enrolled in free and reduced is an important piece because enrolled means that the families have chosen to enroll. There are families who choose not to enroll in free and reduced. This is also slightly under what we would call our ECD rate. Those are two different. Our ECD rate would be slightly higher than 39%. I know that, Ms. Shelley, you ask each year the number of languages that are. So, I was prepared in advance. This, currently, we have 72 other languages other than English that are spoken within our school division. And we are serving over, well over 1,500 else students in our school division. So, predominantly for us, the other language that is spoken the most is Spanish for us. This chart is a large chart and we highlighted two blue columns, or blue rows for the board to really notice that the students with disability enrollment trends have increased exponentially in two specific areas. One is our students with autism, which is the second blue row. And the board will notice that in 2007, the December 1 count for autism was 137 students in our school division. And to date, as of today, we have 441 students with autism that are enrolled in our school division. That category is broken down by 222 are served in a resource model and 219 are served in a self-contained model. And the other, health impairment or OHI, was 442 in 2007 and has increased to 647. Other health impairment is really been increased to a variety of reasons. It could be students with attention deficit disorders. It could be behavior that may interfere with a student's ability to access their education. Sometimes it does include students with autism as well as sometimes it is other sensory impairments as well. So, it is important to note that although from five years ago, our enrollment is down by just slightly under 100, it is important to note that the students' needs have significantly changed. And I think one of the pieces, if I can go back just for a moment, is that enrollment in the free and reduced lunch program is very significant as you can have students that are in multiple categories. And therefore, when you have that number increasing, you could significantly see that impacting multiple areas. This is another way that we can look at our students with special education count trends. On the far right-hand side, you'll see as of November 16th, 2018, this passed, this passed about a week ago. And then, the others are all as our December 1 count. So, you can see that we are going to see another increase from last year to this year and have continued to see an increase. When we think about our students and we think about the diversity of our students, we need to also think about the way that we are going to engage our students in, as Dr. Baker said, not just the content knowledge, but their workforce skills. And I know that many of the board members as well as the public is aware that we are preparing our students for jobs that may not even exist. And that is why, as a state and as a nation, we are looking at making sure that our students are prepared for tomorrow's workforce. And, and that is our, our role as educators and one that we look forward to. So, Mr. Wolf and I are going to present to the board this evening. I know that many of you had an opportunity to hear this presentation before, but we also thought it was important for the community to see, as Dr. Baker said, a, a concept, an idea at this point. Many of the concepts that are going to be presented, there, there has not been curriculum designed. There has not been, that work has not been in, in place. It really is a, a vision at this point. So, preparing our students with the skills to be ready and successful in career and college, we need to be thoughtful about implementing. college, we need to be thoughtful about implementing the profile of a Virginia graduate that does include the five Cs, that critical and creative thinking, that collaboration and citizenship and the ability to communicate well with others. It also means, uh, as Dr. Baker alluded to, having the, the knowledge and the skills that should be, um, achieved by our students so that they are fully prepared. And it's about making sure that we're thinking about redesigning high school to reflect the alternative paths to career and college readiness. And to be thoughtful about how the state has removed some of our SOL assessments, um, that emphasize a smaller, deeper number of assessment, but also means making sure that we're being thoughtful about projects and, and being able to work collaboratively with our students so that they can achieve those five critical thinking skills and, um, creative and collaboration as well. And to prepare our students with those skills to be ready really does mean that we need to be thoughtful that is it time for a change? Is it time for us to be thinking about updating the secondary curriculum? To develop academic programs that are designed with differing learning environments that support those five Cs and they, that foster those workplace skills? And providing students with alternative personalized learning opportunities to prepare them for college and career readiness? And to focus on career personalization for all of our students, all of our over 23, almost 24,000 students. And when we think about that, all of this does align with our teaching and learning framework. The five Cs are in the middle of our students. They are surrounded by the words and we do have additional words there, but the five Cs are located there. And the fans around the circle of our students is about making sure that our teachers have the skills to support the specialty programming, which does require professional learning. It does inquire thinking about the learning environment itself, how assessments should look and the strategies that we are using for instruction. And of course, the red plate is the professional learning that supports all aspects of this change. So what does this mean for future classrooms? It means that we need to be thinking about the space. We need to be thinking about flexible and collaborative furnishings. We need to be thinking about the ability to display work so that teachers and students can work collaboratively in spaces that promote opportunities for engagement and problem solving. It means that we need to be thoughtful about lighting and about acoustics and that flexibility as far as rearranging pieces of furniture. And yes, it does include the use of electronic materials and accessing and using technology, not for technology's sake, but this supports the actual instruction that's going on within that space itself. So at this time, Mr. Wolf is going to, uh, go over some of the specialty concepts that we currently have. Um, as Dr. Baker said, it isn't new to some of us and we are going to be thinking about, um, some of the future ideas, but I believe Dr. Baker would like to add a piece.
Yes, before Mr. Wolf transitions, um, I, I do also want to make sure, in case it would come up later with questions, um, interestingly enough, as we began to develop this concept, it was shortly that thereafter that as part of SOL innovation, uh, that was a, um, really a, a collaboration between the, the State Department and legislators, um, the, there was also an offshoot of that that was called High School Redesign. And it, uh, there were recommendations made by a committee that, uh, the governor had, uh, requested, um, you know, try to help with, uh, as, as certain SOLs were phased out, what would be the way that high school would look in terms of what students, uh, would take and, and how they could, you know, spend more time, uh, engaging in, uh, both courses and areas that they were most interested in and were most viable to their future. And, um, while there were a number of drafts that I got to view of that, in essence, it shifted the high school focus towards less, uh, four years of a, um, what you might call just a, a, uh, a traditional academic program, uh, with core subjects that were required along with electives to a two-year, uh, general, uh, studies followed by, uh, two years of a, a concentration, not completely dissimilar from if you were to go to college and, and have a major. That did not, from what I have been able to see, result in anything, um, tangible or adopted at the state level. But I still recall it because it was something, I don't want you to perceive this as something that we have just developed out here in the wild and that, uh, it's not something that is, is shared in terms of, of a concept. But as we look at, um, High School Redesign, it is still not at a state level where there's clarity in terms of the how you accumulate those credits. There is a spoken and unspoken emphasis on, um, innovation and on expanding opportunities and workforce readiness, but there is nothing that is given as guidance. So that gives us at the local level both a challenge and an opportunity. The challenge is we have to create what that looks like because we don't have that from the state. But the opportunity is that the state is not confining, uh, the localities to have to make high school look the way it always has. But I don't want this to appear as though we believe our high schools have not been providing, um, great opportunities and engaging opportunities for our students. But I think in terms of the, um, the connection to their future and what Mr. Wolf is going to begin to share, we want to expand and enhance what students can actually take and use, uh, for their next steps.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. What I'm about to present tonight, um, uh, has been delivered to a number of, of different people as we went to explore, uh, through the timeline that Dr. Baker had mentioned earlier. Through the 26 years in my experience within the division and speaking for my peers and for anyone who has spent time within the classroom, this is probably one of the most exciting times to be an educator with profile of a Virginia graduate and the opportunity to have high school look different. And, uh, knowing full well that we've had students, uh, over the years, uh, who have traversed through our classrooms of, of, I don't want to say just checking a box to get a, uh, their diploma, but trying to really streamline, uh, their interests, uh, as they pursue whether it's a career or college is exciting to provide that as an opportunity. Many of you have had the opportunity to also be, uh, through VSBA, you heard some information about this. I know that Mr. Blaine and Ms. Phelps who've been part of, of the, uh, Career and Technical Education Advisory Board have heard some of this information as well. So it's an exciting time to do that. Back in October, I presented before the board this slide about our specialty center concepts and some of the current offerings that we have within the county. We know we have the Commonwealth Governor's School. We know we have our IB program out at Spotsylvania High School. Our dual enrollment program is, is peppered throughout our five high schools. We have many different programs that are offered through Career and Tech and we, uh, are excited to offer some additional things coming up and, uh, that I will discuss here shortly. And of course, we have our JROTC programs, our Army JROTC programs that are located at Spotsylvania High School and also over Career and Tech. So the potential, uh, for next year for our school year efforts, those courses that are listed there, the dance, the digital music, theater and sculpture are in a year one pilot. Uh, dance is over at Chancellor, or I'm sorry, Cortland High School, digital music out at Spotsylvania High School, theater over at, when I talk about theater, I'm talking about technical theater over at Chancellor High School, and then sculpture over at Massiaponics in Riverbend. So we, uh, are also exploring our teacher cadet program for next year. So, and I'll talk a little bit about that at the same time. And then, uh, although the titles that you see there for future center ideas and concepts may change, uh, as we conceptualize the, the offerings that are at the school, uh, it's important to keep in mind, and, and I will reiterate what Dr. Baker had already mentioned, is really essentially the vision as opposed to the logistics so far about what are the potential, what we could be. So a little bit of the timeline about where we were at. In 2014 and 15, our specialty center concept discussion began, uh, certainly out of the, the, the birth of profile of a Virginia graduate. So through 15 through 17, discussions with principals, our APIC group, our instructional leadership, liaisons, teacher leadership, our superintendent's stand committee, uh, composed of students and our teacher and parent advisory groups, uh, we discussed, uh, sort of the, the beginnings of specialty center concepts. In 17, 18, planning concepts, uh, concepts continued and then 18, 19, uh, there are the pilot programs that I mentioned before. So some of the, uh, our program and site proposals, the very first one that we see, and there's no school that is attached to it, but it is the School for Environmental Technology. So with the addition of and updating of greenhouses at many of our school sites, Massiaponics High School, Riverbend High School and Spotsylvania High School, we have had the opportunity to explore various areas relating to environmental technology and green STEM-related fields. This center will focus on project and problem-based hands-on learning experiences through application of skills relating to agricultural and engineering fields. Additionally, students in this field may one day play an integral part in the agricultural legislation. For example, the Farm Bill that has not been passed as of yet, but, uh, certainly has, uh, working our, its way through every five years, as they determine the impact of decisions on food and agriculture at the local, regional, state and federal economy. Pathways that could exist in the green STEM deal with are required, we see the various courses that are listed there and then recommended. Um, the new courses that are coming in for next year, you see veterinary science and you see greenhouse landscaping and turf management. We actually, uh, have our veterinary science. We went on a school visit to check out that program, um, uh, down in Henrico, um, to see what was, uh, entailing, um, with the materials and supplies that we would need there. They have a very flourishing program down there, but our space, I would say, is more than adequate to, uh, to, to take over such a program and we have great ideas for that. So, uh, and our greenhouse plant and, uh, production management, that was a course that was submitted to the state prior to Thanksgiving because anytime there's a new course that comes in, you have to, uh, unlike other courses, you have to do a survey of student interest and we have great student interest in our greenhouse plant production management. Our next school is a STEM school of innovation, information technology and cybersecurity and biomedical science. So in reflecting the, the STEM and STEAM pedagogical approach, personalized learning experiences that integrate science, math, technology and engineering, academic offerings will be available for those students who are interested in STEM or STEAM. There's a possibility of Project Lead the Way and Project Lead the Way is essentially an, uh, an organization that develops STEM-related curriculum and training for school divisions. School divisions that participate in Project Lead the Way, uh, work through a contract with the organization and send teachers to training. Different pathways are offered, uh, and the pathway that we would look to explore is the biomedical science program, which essentially could have programs that are, uh, principles of biomedical science, as I have a list of courses here, human body systems, medical interventions and biomedical innovation. So there are various courses that would work through that. And also through our JROTC, a centralization and expansion of our JR, our JROTC programs will occur for those students interested in military careers. Although we have Army, we would love to offer Navy and the other services as well. So this opportunity will afford students access to highly technical coursework and also a, uh, computer programming and cybersecurity. And at this point, I'm going to ask, um, Erin if she would, or Ms. Grant, if she would certainly pass out those forms that I passed out earlier, unless you've already done that, which is good. So I'm going to talk a little bit about that here in a second. So, but with our, um, SCTC, with the newly captured space, with the renovation of Cortland High School and opportunity, sorry, I'm trying to click and talk at the same time. With the newly captured space from the renovation of Cortland High School, an opportunity exists to develop areas or clusters of industrial focus, whether it be in the healthcare, trade and, uh, industry, computer networking, hospitality and tourism. Historically, the classroom lab or setting, uh, that will now be available at SCTC will have, that has always been associated with Cortland High School will be available. These settings will provide us with the capacity to expand current programs and incorporate new opportunities for our students. And these projections could include pharmacy tech, physical occupational therapy, sports medicine, hospitality and tourism, plumbing. Everybody thinks the Career and Tech Center has plumbing, it does not. Cybersecurity and vision care, uh, technology. So in one, uh, of the courses that we're looking to put in there that you see as the last option is Vision Care Technician, we currently have a survey out to our students on, on interest because no other high school or school system out of the 132 school systems have that course within, uh, uh, the state. So of the form that you, um, see that Ms. Grant happened to pass out, I just want to draw your attention to the cybersecurity options. This year is our first opportunity that we had for cybersecurity and many of the school divisions, uh, around the Commonwealth had offered this course last year. So they would be in year two. And I will share with you, just from, uh, anecdotally of being at, uh, many meetings and conferences with these individuals, they wish they would have waited because the curriculum was released in June and they were implementing in August, September. So they're swimming along with the curriculum at the same time and staying about two weeks ahead of the students. We had the opportunity to wait, uh, we were not going to do that to our teachers, wasn't fair. So, but you can see in just the middle column where it talks about the year one course for grades nine, 10 and 11, uh, just about every person or every career cluster can go ahead and teach cybersecurity fundamentals. That's 6302. We thought in the division, we would have five courses in, um, uh, peppered across our, uh, the five high schools. We have 14 classes of cybersecurity fundamentals. We have students who are extremely interested in this course. So our next year, uh, our cybersecurity software operations will, will fold into the mix. So, and if we have 14 classes that are coming up or the potential to come up, it's what's coming in behind them. So, but I show this, uh, to all of you to say that essentially cybersecurity in and of itself could be a specialty center. With Amazon coming in, uh, with anywhere between 23, I've heard as, as little as 23 and as most of, uh, as 86,000 positions across the Commonwealth for cybersecurity alone. So, um, but I would say certainly with Amazon coming in, there's potential for our students and we want to make sure that they're prepared for the future. So we also look at the, the next bullet for travel and tourism. Um, we have had, uh, various business partners call over to our Career and Tech Center looking for whether it happens to be our culinary arts students, uh, uh, to fill positions. Uh, we have just put in, uh, for a, a course for next year for hospitality and tourism that will certainly, uh, talk about the various aspects of that industry. So we can, uh, have the supply and demand, well, the demand for, uh, uh, the supply for the demand. Thank you. So for the School for Visual and Performing Arts and Humanities, students who have an interest in the visual and/or performing arts may select courses that prepare them for post-secondary advanced studies in arts-related occupations. The balance between artistic development and academic preparation will be a focus of this school. Students pursuing, pursuing this pathway will be exposed to the humanities and will have the opportunity to focus on instrumental, on vocal music, dance, theater, creative expression, culture and history, analysis and criticism. All pathways emphasize performance and exhibition. Literacy will be stressed across the curriculum and all aspects of art are incorporated throughout. In addition, students enrolled in this program will explore the cultural influences within the arts and their impact on history in the 21st century. So some of the pathways that come across in the occupations that you will see there that are, uh, so, anywhere from acting to stage entertainer to, uh, certainly stage manager and backstage opportunities. We have performing arts pathways in our, uh, music program, whether that's to be through concert choir or small vocal ensemble. Um, a individual can also, uh, pursue many of the occupations that I just listed that you can see there. And then the Health and Human Services, I'm sorry, let me come back through there. Health and Human Services, we talked about cosmetology. If it's a theater arts program, what an opportunity for our students who, for set design and also working with the actresses and actors to go ahead and potentially work with those students, uh, while learning a skill and a trade at the same time. Dr. Baker?
I just wanted to also share with the board as, as all of this is being shared because I know it's, it's quite a bit, over that, um, that brief timeline that Mr. Wolf was sharing with you at the beginning of, um, trying to, uh, share this, this concept, I, I think the development of this concept also needs to be emphasized that this was not, um, merely a top-down, uh, initiative, uh, coming from the division level to folks and saying, do you like it or not? But we engaged folks in, uh, various groups and I know that Mr. Wolf did quite a bit of that on the, uh, the CTE side, uh, along with other, um, folks, including Ms. Belaco and Ms. Flannard. But back in, I think it was probably 13, 14 or 14, 15, as we were completing the bond, um, development. development, I asked Katrina Negley, who is a, one of our, she is our fine arts liaison, she put together a focus group and a study group to look at different models of visual and performing arts academies, looking both in our state and beyond. And I want to share that, because the pilot courses that are actually taking place right now, that our students are benefiting from, those were developed by those teachers. And so I want you to have that, because when you're thinking about this, know that teachers are involved in developing this work, not just accepting or rejecting it, but they're actually helping us to drive it and appropriately pace it.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Baker. So our next program is the Teacher Prep Academy. So a teacher prep academy will provide a unique and conducive experience for those students interested in pursuing a career in education. Students will explore pedagogical approaches coupled with valuable field experiences. They will work through coursework and complete internships. These hands-on experiences allow us to build our own training ground for future Spotsylvania County Public School teachers. And what you see here are certainly just secondary, I'm sorry, partial secondary, so you'll see all kinds of options when it comes down to potential employment for working within our school division or outside of our school division. But looking at the latest labor market data for the Commonwealth, we will see that there will be a need for approximately 7,000 teachers by the year 2024, with over 1,000 in our local workforce investment area alone. And that local workforce investment area does not include Stafford. So we are the Bay Area Consortium, so 1,000 teachers by 2024. I'm sorry?
More, 1,000 more teachers.
A thousand more, yes. So our next program, Advanced College Academy and Center for Social Sciences and Business Leadership. In addition to our AP Capstone programs that we currently have at two of our high schools, the Advanced College Academy and Center for Social Sciences and Business Leadership will house an entrepreneur personalized learning center. Different from some of the other learning centers, this pathway encourages post-secondary education and will provide students with an opportunity to dive into the world of business. This center will work with entrepreneurial organizations, as well as provide exposure to business leadership, innovation, and careers in economics and investment. Problem-solving, business leadership, finance courses will be encouraged at this center. Due to the proximity of Germana Community College, this academy will also house an early college program. High school students will work with, on both a high school diploma and an associate degree while in school. And at this time, I think it's a good opportunity to pause for questions.
Yeah, I also know that if you have other questions about the teacher cadet development, that is one that Ms. Colbert and her folks have also been working with various partners. And we even had a meeting today with a study group from Germana, again, in bringing that to fruition. But as you know, the need is there, and as we have tried to, we've really examined over the years, how do we not only increase, you know, the numbers that we have to recruit, also the diversity of our workforce has been an emphasis of this board. And most of the advice we've gotten from any educators or experts out there has been to develop a grow-your-own program as one of the best ways to have a strong return on an investment. So I appreciate the work our folks have done, but we'll now take any questions on this from the board.
Mr. Braswell?
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I want to tell Dr. Baker, I fully understood that the, it's a concept that we have to refine, and it's going to evolve, because it's a new, it's new. And so we have to work out the kinks, and I know we have to get guidance from the state, and I know that we have to make sure that we have the proper resources in place in terms of manpower and how we recruit teachers in the future. But my original comment, when I asked Mr. Upperco about the resourcing, is that we, since it's in a developmental phase that we have to war game, these options, so that when we, we war game it, we have an idea what those costs are or what those pitfalls are. So I never had a chance to respond to your comment, but that was my intent in what I was saying.
Can I also respond back that I do understand that, and I don't disagree with you. I wanted to make sure that, that really I would be the only one you'd be zoned in on if that wasn't done at this point, because I have, I'm encouraging all of us to make sure that we don't just cost out a concept or proposal without considering that it may not just be what else or what more we can do to provide for our students, but what we may provide that's different. Because I know that even Mr. Wolf, in working with the Career and Technical Center and in looking at what we currently offer, what's easy in terms of culture is to add new things to what folks are already comfortable with. What is difficult is to make changes in what we have always offered. Where there may not be as much of an additional expense, there is just a shifting of the funding. So when, so that's why I'm saying, conceptually, it's going to be real important that as we refine the concept and as we determine how to move forward, both the pacing of how we move forward and where we decide that we're going to commit to something in terms of these pathways will determine what those costs are. So that's, I completely agree, we have to get down to the brass tacks of what are the true budget implications of this, both now and in the future. But there may be a situation where we are offering things or we are providing opportunities that we need to phase out, versus we need to just add something on top of what we currently offer. And so when our students are given these types of options in terms of choices, are there things that no longer need to be options, because they're no longer going to be needed? And I'm speaking very broadly, I don't have a specific thing in mind, but I do think that, an example is those pilot courses that I mentioned a minute ago. My understanding is that the students are loving those pilot courses in the visual and performing arts, and that they filled up quite well this year. And so when that starts to happen, then other areas that maybe used to have more students will now not have more students, especially if we have very little growth in our overall students in the next few years. So I agree with you, I just want to make sure that it's not, we miss the vision, because we're already trying to, you know, put all the costs next to it.
Right.
Dr. Meyer?
Yeah, I think it's the hardest part is in creating that vision, and you're working from 10,000 feet up and looking at it systemically across all of our high schools, is what best pathways can we offer to the students? And I noticed on page 29, provide students, time for a change, provide students with alternative personalized learning pathways. Those alternative personalized learning pathways is what will guide the students to be actively engaged in programs that they want to be in, not what, in essence, in the past, where we've set up a high school guideline, and the freshman year you take this, the sophomore year you take that, junior year this, and senior year that. You know, and if you're on a math program, you follow that math pathway. This is something altogether different when you're looking at careers for students, for jobs we don't know yet that will be there, but we have to give them those opportunities. It also tells me personalized means the way we will have to involve our guidance folks in working with students, it's almost like an individualized education program that we're providing on a special ed basis, that we now provide for all high school students. Not, and the emphasis that we've given in the past, and I use this at different conferences, you can recall back when, you know, we had put the word out there that, you know, we can do better. We were offering 2 million in scholarship availability to our students, and we thought we were doing well, but we said we can do better. Now we're at the 40-plus million. The amount of effort and the focus that we've created in that, we need to do the same now. Look at it 10,000 feet up, how do we create a systemic process for all of our high school students, including those that are going on to college two-year, four-year programs, but we need to pick up everybody else. We put the others and let them swim by themselves, we've not given them, you know, swimming instructions on how to get there. We need to be doing that. So that personalized approach is going to translate into the need for additional resources, whether it be guidance or whatever, curriculum development, whatever. But, you know, I'm having difficulty separating the vision and want to get into it, thinking, what can we do already next year, and pull back and say, "Wait a second, you know, let's make sure we're covering the bases, you know, for all of our high school students, not just on a particular one focus only." And, because my question was going to be, after that kind of a statement, where are we going next year? Is it preparing the vision, or are we trying to implement, is the question?
I think that if, and again, you have to put some of those slides together, but we've already begun to implement portions of the vision, and we brought up the teacher cadet program as something that we'd like to launch in 1920. We'd also like to launch an expansion of our dual enrollment program to make an associate's degree, as we talked about today, either at diploma time or one year following diploma time, a more viable option for many more students. So we are in that process, but I think to go to the level of detail and implementation that you're describing, Dr. Meyer, and I think that Mr. Braswell was alluding to, we need to have the support of the school board, and we need to know that we are not putting forth that type of an effort in vain, or with the idea that folks aren't behind it. And maybe another way to view it is, a big focus for our entire school division is increasing the emphasis in classroom, in the classroom setting for all students at all levels, on the why of their learning. You know, why are they learning what they're learning? And I think, at a, again, a bigger level or a broader level at the high school, why are students in high school? What are they going to achieve as a result of their learning in high school? And so what we're trying to do, and I think what you've seen in some of the presentations and the academies of Hampton and other, is to make sure that, I'm increasingly concerned that students, all students, especially the increasing needs of our students, that they come to school knowing why they are coming, not to accumulate credits and get a diploma, but that they are learning something that excites them, they are learning about something that they can see contributing directly to a productive future. And I believe that this concept gives many more of our students that opportunity. And it is not to say that a traditional rigorous and relevant academic program still can't do that. We're not saying we throw out the baby with the bathwater, but to expand these and make them a reality in the next five years or so, we need the school board to at least come to consensus that you would like us to pursue this at the next level.
Mr. Blaine and I attended a two-and-a-half-hour session at VSBA with Hampton Academies, and it was very eye-opening on several fronts. One, an assurance that all 1,400 students, that's how many they have in high school each year, all 1,400 will have a career plan. That's quite a statement, and I was floored to hear that kind of a statement. All 1,400, and the emphasis, and guess who was making the statement? It was not the superintendent, this was the city manager. That's how much backing is in the, behind the plan. The city manager was explaining to everybody how this program is going to help the city of Hampton. We had an example a couple of weeks ago, and Mrs. Phelps brought up about the need for firefighters. It was an example that she used, the city manager saying, when she was approached by the citizenry and the businesses, she was able to explain, "We have a program right in our own backyard, this is how we can serve you with our plan." It took, and they emphasized, it took a lot of collaboration and cooperation, steering committees and everything, working together to accomplish that, but can it be done? Yes, I think Hampton has given testimony that it can be done, and they're still, you know, gradually increasing and improving, but that it can be done? And I'm convinced that, yes, you know, we need to be doing that. There is where, you know, we've emphasized our collegiate group, you know, two-year, four-year process, but we, and we've emphasized Career and Tech, not to say we haven't, but from what Mr. Wolf, you know, showed, we can do significantly more at Career and Tech, and that's just one avenue. We have all the other high schools at the home basis where we need to be doing this as well. So I'm convinced that we need to make the high school learning program relevant to the student. It takes care of your attendance problem, it covers a multitude of others, and they showed where attendance, or lack of attendance, was down significantly, discipline down significantly because the students were engaged. So, you know, they sold me on what they're doing, we can't just copy what they do, we have to make our own, but we can certainly learn from them. And I think the approach that's being presented makes a lot of sense.
Ms. Shelley?
I'm going to let Ms. Phelps go first.
Okay, I'm going to go back. I have some notes that I wrote down, I know we're at questions, but I was writing them down as we were going over, and it's probably a question for Tedra on page 25 on the slides. It was just something that I wanted to answer in my notes, so I had factual documentation. I'm there, out of the 31, 51 total that we have in the student with disability enrollment, the trends on the bottom. How many are, and you probably know it off the top of your head, because I know I've asked you every year, how many are IEPs and how many are 504s?
This count is all IEPs.
Okay.
All, all IEPs. The state only requires us to report our data for funding for students with disabilities that are currently protected under the IDEA or Special Education. Our current section 504 numbers are about 856, I'd have to count again, I'd have to look again, but the last time I checked, a few weeks ago, that's where we were.
I know, thank you.
Lisa, excuse me, could you spoke a little, speak a little closer to your, thank you.
How's that?
Great, perfect. That's four inches.
Thank you.
And then I have another question, on page 35, and I guess this might be for Carol, Ms. Flannard. The pilot programs that are the dance, digital music, sculpture, technical theater, they're already implemented, am I correct?
Yes, you're one of those courses are currently going on.
So, and, and so where was the funding source for those?
These were electives that were brought in, and carryover was used for the supply.
That's right.
Right.
So you gave an extra block?
Yes.
Yes, the teaching staff has an extra block, so that they are able to actually teach, and then the equipment itself was used, the, I believe it was carryover funds, at a curriculum? Yes.
So let's just say there is students that are enrolled there, will they have the opportunity to continue on?
Yes, with the help of Katrina Negley that Dr. Baker had mentioned earlier, our fine arts liaison, the teachers have developed a year-two pilot to carry through on those programs, so that those students can continue through.
Because that would, that would concern me, that, I know some students that are enrolled there, and they were looking forward to it. So like Dr. Baker had mentioned, it's one thing to give something or to pilot a program, it's another thing when you pull it back, it's not fair.
No, no.
That's why I'm...
Yeah, no, not interested in pulling it back.
So, I might be a little on the realist...
So I might be a little on the realist side, but there is a price tag with change, new programs, new, and price tags always go up. So for me, it's not, it's not that, it wouldn't be a, keep an open mind to look at a vision. However, as an elected school board member, I would hope that we would have a public hearing so, and we can talk, each one of us talk to the, the public and the constituents to really see, get their input and see where they're at. And that's what I'm really hoping on that we can do. It's not to say that this doesn't sound good. It doesn't look good, but the reality is, is things cost money and taxpayers pay for it. So that would probably be for me, the place that I would like to at least see a start to get the input from the community and the taxpayers. Also, I do know, and I know Dr. Meyer had mentioned the Hampton City Schools. I don't know if we have, if we can get or look at their finances or to see how their program has done. Kind of take a snapshot of it, just like we're taking a snapshot of this vision to see their finances and if it was beneficial or if they're in the black, red, just to get some idea of the, the funding, the money behind it. So those were my, those were my concerns. I have seen this slideshow presentation before, and I appreciate all the work and everything that's gone into it. And outside-the-box thinking is always a great thing, but rest assured, there is costs that come with it. So that's all I have to share. Thanks.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Being that we are on the I-95 corridor, I like the cyber stuff because cybersecurity with, like you mentioned, Amazon, but Northern Virginia, we've got Dahlgren just down the road, we have Quantico just up the road. We've got quite a, quite a bit of the cyber world nearby. And being that that is a, one of the most, probably fastest-growing areas in the country for business, having the innovation here in Spotsylvania County, I think may help us to attract businesses here to Spotsylvania County. We are, being student-centered and the student interest, I think is huge because the students would be coming to school to do something that they want to do. But looking at the innovation that you are looking at, that you are bringing to us, that you're considering, I think is amazing because it could, like I mentioned, it could bring businesses because the first thing businesses are gonna know, what are the schools like? And when they see that we have these innovative schools happening here in Spotsylvania County, then cyber, and I mean, I think when we add plumbing, and Mrs. Grant and I have talked about this before, we could actually build, have our students building a house, the ground up, and if we had resources donated, then we could be able to maybe donate a house that our students build to Habitat for Humanity or something. So that's something that I think that our school division, we should be known for. And we will be with this innovation, it's, yes, we know it's gonna cost money, but as Dr. Baker said, we may be some other programs that are not growing and students have no interest in anymore because they were, they're old, I don't hate the word, but old-fashioned. Then we start with the new, the new technologies. And our students would be more engaged. And then maybe there wouldn't be that big of a cost because we are getting rid of some of the older programs to add in the new. And I know there's grants out there. And we have wonderful, Mrs. Bulaco is a wonderful grant writer, and we just need to find the grants, and then we can get those grants as well. I think this is a wonderful, wonderful ideas that you're bringing to us, Dr. Baker. Bravo. Your staff, bravo. I truly like this idea.
I think, you know, it's opportune, as we're starting to work on our strategic plan, you know, that the strategic plan creates the vision. And then the vision, then the staff, once we've settled in on the vision, then the staff can put the logistics to it and make it become a reality. But we have to have the vision first. And I think Ms. Phelps is right. There is a cost, but I do not let the cost determine the vision. I establish the vision first. Where do we want to go? What do we want to do? Then we can put the pieces to how are we gonna do it? Because we have enough ingenuity and creativity that we can come up with how. Just like, you know, Hampton came up with it three, four years ago when they started their journey. And they have the buy-in and the support from their city council. To have the city manager there explaining the program to us, to a group of 50, 60 people, that says a lot. They do have the buy-in and the support. It's not free. No one would expect it to be if you're gonna have to need additional guidance council, just as one example. But there are ways to accomplish that. And I think the first step is to going through the six-year plan and create the vision. And then we can work out a map of how do we get there. But I think that vision is important and recognizing that costs are associated with it. But it is worth it if we're looking at what we're trying to do for the benefit of the students. And to have students who are engaged and know what they want to do when they're in ninth grade, come in eighth grade, going into ninth, that they are working on their career path, their career plan. That says an awful lot. And I think it is important that, you know, we create that vision and then we can make it happen. Thank you.
Mr. Blaine.
I have two or three things to, more, more his background, I think, that I think need to be kept in mind. And one, you spoke about dual enrollment, and that's a terrific program coming, very frankly. If you're a parent, you've got children on their way to college, and they have dual enrollment, they accumulated two years of credit before they finished high school, or whatever it happens to be, how much money is that parent saving right off the bat? But in order to put them in that situation, we gotta have teachers in our staff who are qualified. And if I understand correctly, we need master's degrees in their area of expert, of what they're teaching. And I think this is a good argument for us as a school board to set up a fund, and this costs money. And it's certainly from the standpoint of the county, if they could, if the population looks at them and say, boy, you really helped us get all of our high schools, all of our teachers with master's degrees. And I am saving a lot of money now on my expenditures for my children. I think the population will be behind our county government and are gonna be willing to provide the necessary funding for that. So I would like to see us do that. I'm really pleased, frankly, to see the teacher prep area. For a long time, I've, I've looked, and we have many, many, many military people in this area. And we give them a good recognition and a good start and work at it. But you folks that are teachers here, you're affecting society in a very different way. And the people that we're recruiting to be teachers today are the people that enable this society of ours to prosper and move ahead. You are, because of your background and your day-to-day experience, providing a service that absolutely nobody else could do. And it's so valuable for us, and it doesn't show in our wages that we pay you and the thing that attracts you. And sometimes I bet even you've wondered, why do they get into this business? It's not paying it like what I would have, except that the reward for you, frankly, is. And we need to figure out some way of helping our teachers increase their salaries and certainly dual enrollment programs, I guess, would help them a little bit. But those two areas I have a major concern with. The third one is that teachers and principals tell me that half of the kids almost that enroll in kindergarten have never had a book in their hand. You've heard me say this before. And what a teacher's can do in a classroom is very much based on what kind of background the children have. And if, I would like to see us figure out some way of getting a report at one of our board meetings, frankly, about the status of preschool children. How many kids really are in New Head Start? How many are in Virginia Preschool Initiative? And that leaves 80% that don't get anything. And here we get into the kind of families that are moving into our community. Free and reduced lunches now is a major, major factor. And if you think about who, who fits into that category? Well, it's people that are kind of tied on funding. If they're tied on funding, how much are they doing at home to read to their children, to spend time with kids, to develop vocabulary? They don't have time even to think about that. And we pay the price right off the bat because when those children come in, I say to some mothers, you're, you know, your kid's gonna be two years behind at kindergarten if you're not careful. And I don't think that's an overstatement either. And so I think that if, as a community, if we, and as a school board, if we can figure out ways to communicate to our community some of the responsibilities of parenthood so that we can have the raw material that's ready for kindergarten when they start. So those are just some thoughts that I would ask people to keep in their mind as we move ahead. I think what I've seen in this whole program is really very, very impressive. I have to thank the folks, and the pathways idea is phenomenal. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, ma'am chair. I'll be very quick. I want to say to Dr. Meyer, I fully concur with your highlighting of the fact that the vision has to tie in with the strategic plan. But I also understand Ms. Phelps's concerns that you have to have a cost-benefits analysis because in the final analysis, we have to sell whatever it is that we're trying to, you know, what we see, we have to sell it. And so I think both comments were a point on.
Ms. Phelps.
I just wanted to, I had something in my notes. The, I send my kids off every day, on a school bus every day. So a snapshot of the transportation, and, and I, and I say this, and I can't be more clear about it. Those bus drivers are the most important person to me as a parent today, putting my child on there and getting them to school safely. And let's be real about it. Our transportation department, we need bus drivers, right? We need bus drivers here. So what is the snapshot of the transportation from somebody from Lee Hill, my district, that wants to go out to Spotsie to learn agriculture? You know, and so that's just one more layer that is concerning me as a parent and looking towards our bus drivers are covering each other's rides. Some of them are just working for benefits. I mean, and I'm not complaining about the bus drivers by any means, nor the administration there. But they need help right now. So what is the snapshot of the transportation for me as I send my child off? I have another eight years here in Spotsylvania County Public Schools with my children. And so I, I, that is a huge concern for me. And, and I've heard it from other constituents and community members, whatever, taxpayers, whoever, Spotsylvania County residents. Their concern is the transportation. So a snapshot to have that for me as a parent today in Spotsylvania County Schools would help to further a vision, the vision that's been created here or that's being created to, you know, look to be implemented. So that was a, a, one of my notes that I had written down. And I also, the counselors, we were talking about counselors, you know, we have counselors now that track students. But, and I know my son, one of my, my children are going into high school next year, eighth grade. The counselors are wonderful at his school. But there's two, right? So that would require more counselors, which means funding, which means positions. So when I sit here and say there's costs with a vision, there is. Because in my world, that counselor means the world to me to guide my son and my children through their school years, academic years. And where are they going? Because when, I don't know, my son last week wanted to be a baseball player, a, what was it this week? My other son wants to be an architect, then an engineer going into ninth grade. So does he really know his avenue? For me and other people that I've spoken to? I don't know. I, I mean, that's not for me to say. But I know for my son and my family, they don't know where they're going, where they want to be. So is it a hope shot? You know, it sounds good, but there's a lot of questions for me and a lot of questions that the, I think the public should be aware of this and come back and share with all of us. So we all get input here, emails, phone, texts, whatever. But anyway, that's all I have. Thanks.
Dr. Meyer, your question about, was asked, why do people like the program at the Hampton schools? Do you recall, didn't he say something like 83% graduating changed to 96% graduating or something like that?
That's correct.
Yeah. Talk about motivation, there it is.
Mr. Twig.
All this talk about additional curriculum is great. I admire us attempting to put this stuff, this added learning ability into our high schools. And however, I am of the impression that if we could perhaps shave that vision a little bit to something more real that we could apply today and something, instead of something intangible that we can't even put numbers to, if we could focus today on putting those year-one curriculums into an additional high school next year and the year after. And let's start to push these products, these classes around the county. We also, I also have note, we have existing programs that need attention. You know, we don't have plumbers, plumber training, which I find unnecessary in a, in a career tech center. I think we could have other enhancements that we can provide in that arena. We have one computer programming teacher in this county. We had to, until recently, that teachers at Riverbend spoke to me recently about that. Computers slash programming is probably, it's gotta be in the top four needs for professions in this country right now. So there's an item that needs attention. We've got teacher free time issues. We've got class size issues despite our, our good general number. We've got eight to 10 students in our, our business and government programs, but yet you go to several classrooms down the halls in each of these facilities, these high schools, and what do we have? You know, 28, 31 students? You know, another issue that we can't forget as we're expanding and expounding on our vision, which is okay, but yet we, we have to consider these other issues. vision, which is okay, but yet we have to consider these other issues. And I would advise to you, Dr. Baker, and our staff that I think our next step needs to be, proceed, however, put this concept into a one, two, three, five, and seven-year plan. What does, what's this project slash program slash dynamic threshold shift going to look like two years from now, three years from now, five years, and seven years from now? But I think the next step, and certainly for me, and as I'm representing my constituents in Livingston District, they would want to see, they would want me to explain that to them. Second thing I would advise is start to put some numbers together. How much is this going to cost in year one, two, three, five, and seven? And the bus issue was brought up. We also have boundary concerns that nobody has spoken about except on a couple of sidebars that I'm aware of. And we have issues like that that are huge. I'd call them dynamic issues. So let's proceed perhaps with caution, sorry if that's a bad terminology in the education business, but that's what I'd like to see as a next step as we chase this. Thank you very much.
I want to apologize ahead of time to my fellow board members and the people here. But as you know, I normally don't talk very much, but I'm pretty passionate about this. So I might ramble a little bit. And I'm actually probably going to have to stand up and I'm just going to speak loudly, Mr. Blaine, so I won't be in front of the microphone, but I think this is going to, if you have some hand gestures, then I don't want to hit my microphone. Being the youngest person on this board, I always struggle with having a different vision than the rest of my board members. And coming from this background and being in this school system and seeing it change over the years and being a product of the school system, this is one of the most, we're always behind. We're behind other states. Now, it's partly because Virginia's education plan is slightly behind other states and not as visionary. So we have to follow what the state mandates us. But the state is starting to open up their eyes and giving us chances to give opportunities to young people to let us have them excited about going to school. And us as Americans, we all know one of the biggest downfalls in our society is we hate change. And everyone knows I hate change more than anybody in the world. But this is a change we are so behind on as a society. I mean, we were one of the last societies in the world to have different women go to school. We were one of the last societies in the world to educate different races as one group. We cannot be one of the last societies to encourage our children to pursue what they want at earlier ages. And we're just sticking them in the same model, in the same model over and over again to where they're getting more stimulation from texting their friend in the middle of class than what they're learning in class because they're bored by it. They're so bored. And this gives you the opportunity to not have to take all the boring classes. And the fact that our state is offering us this opportunity to let kids decide what they want to do with their lives and to be passionate about something and for all the naysayers to be sitting up there shaking their heads, they're not opening their eyes to how this could have cost savings. Right now, we have to offer the same classes to every kid in five different buildings. Now we're going to offer one class to all the kids in one building. So that's only one teacher teaching one class instead of five teachers teaching one class. That's less money. We're going to be busting kids around to where they want to go. We're not forcing them to go to school all day in one building. That's less brick and mortar space. It will not have the financial impact that people are anticipating because they're not opening their eyes and looking at it from the macro management level. From being, owning a business for 20 years, you have to learn how to look at things from the top down like the vision is. And if you want to see how Hampton has been able to pay for this, all you have to do is Google it and click on finance and you can read all about it. There's amazing thing about research is you can look into things on your own and you can get these answers. These are not new concepts, right? All over the country, different programs like that has been going on. All over our state, as Mr. Wolf has pointed out, these programs have been going on. Fact that we're going to attempt to incorporate it on a county-wide level is going to have cost savings. Not, not saying there's not going to be an additional investment, but as we discussed, there's grants everywhere. There's ways to save money. It's going to save on brick and mortar schools. It's going to save on repeated, repeated, repeated classes that we don't have to offer in every building because we only have to offer them in one building now. So we save on staff or we just transfer the position. Or we, instead of having five sections of introduction to business, you only have one in each class and everybody else that wants to go the business route is going to all be going to the other school. So your positions are just shifting. It's not incurring a giant cost. As far as transportation goes, there's this transportation shortage across the country, across our state, across our county, and we're figuring out ways to work on it. Each year, just as our countywide, we're trying to target that. But you have to also look into the future. What we're doing today and the situation today might not be the same five years from now. So we can't let one factor hamper the choices for thousands of students that could change their lives. Fred might expand. You might have hoverboards. I mean, like there's things that could, having one thing hamper your decision now because you're closed-minded and you're not willing to look into the future is just amazing to me that you can't open up your eyes and see how something like this could really change the county. It's going to happen across the country anyway because it's already happening. It's going to happen across the state anyway, so it's already happening. So instead of catching up in 10 years because we invested in the old-fashioned brick and mortar, every student take the same class program for 10 years to then have the state mandate us to have the change and then we invested all that money into nothing, why not be on front of it all? Take the money, invest before the state mandates it. And we've been putting our money towards something that we're looking forward to instead of what we've been doing for 50 years. Kids are different now. Times are different now. Everything is different. We're still focusing on the same old education system, which has to change to keep up. We have to keep these children motivated. That's why we're here. And yes, cost is a huge ordeal. This will be cheaper once it's implemented. This will allow students to go with the route that they want to go to. And if you are a child that hasn't decided what you want to do, you're fine. You go to one school building for the day, you take your gen ed classes just like you would if you're in college and you still don't know when you go to a liberal arts college. Or if you're 40 and you go back to school because you've changed your mind about something you want to do. This doesn't tie the kid in. It just allows a child to go down the path if they know what they're going to do and get it done sooner. If you have a child that knows they want to be a plumber and we're not offering plumbing, it's sad that we're not letting them graduate and be ready to walk into the job. If you have a child that is better at computers at 10 than I am at 37 and will be for the rest of my life and you want to go the route of cybersecurity and you're ready to write stuff, fantastic, why not give them that opportunity? Because I'm not, they're not taking my job, right? So they need, computer programming, as Mr. Twig mentioned, I just Googled it real quick because I was curious, but it's a great example of something we should have done six years ago. Because what I just looked up says the demand for computer programmers is going to decrease 10% a year for the next decade because computer programming is something that can be done worldwide and you can phone it in. There's not a huge demand domestically for computer programming. But six years ago, it was at its high. And if we had had that sooner and earlier, those kids would have had that opportunity. So I just don't, I want to make sure that my board members sit down and actually look at the possibilities of how this can save money, not cost money. Because building buildings is expensive. It is the old-fashioned way of doing things. You build a building, you outgrow it. You build another building, you outgrow it. If you can bust kids around, keep them interested, it saves the trouble of having to build buildings where we don't need them. So personnel, as you pointed out, won't change because it's the same amount of teachers. You don't need as many of class offerings in each class. You're just moving the positions to different locations. So you have to look at it on the macro level and then work your way down to the micro level if you actually want to see the direct cost. There's going to be initial startup costs, but it will turn out to save money in the long run. And I just beg everybody before they jump to a conclusion to look at it through the eyes of yourself 20 years ago instead of through your eyes of a jaded person these days. So that's just my encouragement and I hope that everyone bared with me and sorry.
Anything else before we move on? Okay, Mr. Wolf.
I believe the next section that, and again, thank you to all the board members for their input. Regardless of where we go from here, I think that we certainly sensed a lot of ideas and passion and I think that's good. If nothing else, it instilled some dialogue that I think is going to need to continue in terms of the direction. And I'll just share what Dr. Meyer had said as we have again a cross-section of folks. And so when we talk about input from the community, that's also been something we've been gathering, will continue to gather. But I think the development of that long-range plan for, you know, destination 2025 is going to help us to integrate this process and to provide the additional details that folks are seeking. But as we get into this next section that is going to get into some of the brass tacks of budgeting, I am thrilled frankly to hear the concerns over things such as class size, over putting greater investments in our current school system, not the vision of the future, but just the now. Because frankly, I find that to be an enormous challenge every year, not just for the future, is to get all folks to simply fund what we need now at the levels that we need to. And so as these folks share with you how we are trying to manage those resources, I am excited that they will be sharing that with very open and I'm sure advocates come budget season for us to garner all the funding we need to address some of these areas. Thank you.
Madam Chair, to the members of the board, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin, I will frame and open this section up for my colleagues a bit just to give you all some background in terms of how and the processes that we facilitate to allocate our resources. And specifically, we are talking about our teachers and our support staff. When we look at the processes we facilitated over the past really six years, it really has been a collaborative effort that involves departments across this building to include our office, the construction department, as well as the finance department. It really does begin with Ms. Gaines and her team with the support of the board and the budget development process. And then we collectively ensure that we stay within those confines of the FTEs that have been allocated for the different needs. We really do begin this process of looking at staff and how we should allocate them as early as late February, the beginning of March, and our teams come together initially monthly. And this process does transition into a bi-weekly and then a weekly meeting that includes Ms. Flannard, Mr. Wolf, Ms. Balaico, Ms. Richardson, a number of other folks from the Office of Student Support Services, Mr. Mitchell from the School Counseling Department, and as well as just a host of other folks from even my area from the Life Centrepiece. So we talk about all areas that we can consider. And those decisions really do begin with looking at student performance data and where are those needs based on what our data reveals and what additional resources and supports our schools need. In addition to that, we do look at student enrollment. We also look at the current staffing across the schools and garner input from our principals based on their master scheduling process. So Ms. Balaico, Mr. Wolf are really instrumental along with Ms. Richardson in looking at where's your student enrollment? Where are we in terms of staffing and meeting those needs and where do we need to provide some additional support? One of the ongoing things I heard in this last discussion has really been looking at how do we reallocate our resources? So I don't want to close this part of introducing this section to not emphasize that we do often look at what the needs are and then identify where schools may be able to resolve their own issues as it relates to class sizes or how other schools may make some shifts in the resources that they have to better support the schools. So we do thoughtfully, we probably meet on average about an hour a meeting as the summers go by, they get a little bit longer at times, but it really is a think tank of all of us coming together on a weekly basis until we get those schools staffed and ready to go. So at this time, I will turn it over to Ms. Flannard and she will talk with you all a bit about the guidelines or regulations that are set forth by the VDOE in terms of helping us to make those staffing decisions as well.
Thank you, Ms. Colbert. In order to think about the allocation of our FTEs or teaching positions, we do have parameters and guidelines that I know that many of the board members are aware of, but it's important for our community to be aware of as well. The first bullet references a governor's class, small class size initiative at some of our schools. It's actually at our elementary schools and it's currently 13 of our elementary schools in which some of the schools are required to have smaller class sizes K through three and some of the other schools have even different parameters on them. So we do have to work within those confines. We also have, I know the board is familiar with, the standards of quality, which is currently has flexibility, but it does provide guidance in regards to student teacher ratios as well as expectations for the board to consider for positions in its entirety. We also have parameters for our career and technical education courses. Most of those courses, the board will recall Mr. Wolf saying the magic number of 20, most of them are capped at 20. And then of course, we have our special education state regulations and those are varied depending on the disability. And I know that Ms. Richardson is going to bring that into her slide when she goes over her area as well. And at this time, I am going to talk a little bit and have Ms. Balaico and Ms. Richardson as well as Mr. Wolf talk about the process and how it varies a little bit for each area.
I have to get really close. I've got a shorter mic. As Ms. Colbert suggested, we get together multiple times sometimes during the summer really to look at our staffing. There is only so much staffing to go around, so we really have to look very deeply at needs across the school division. For elementary specifically, September 30th is a magic date for me because there are certain classes that cannot go above certain thresholds. So if I have yet one teacher to allocate for all of my elementary schools, I have to make sure that those specific schools don't go above those thresholds before I can allocate that last teacher. Right now, we have some, honestly, some really good numbers in terms of averages, but I will tell you that an average is just that. There are certainly some high spots as well, but always looking forward. So all of my first grade numbers now I know will be in second grade and so on. So I'm really looking monthly at the numbers and where the fluctuations are in our enrollment. So as we move toward the spring, we can really make some decisions about what So as we move toward the spring, we can really make some decisions about what kind of folks we need to look for now as we get December grads and as we start to plan for our job fair.
Thank you, Ms. Balaico. For special education, our staffing standards are a little different. They are set forth by the regulations governing special education programs for students with disabilities here in our state, and the state has a model of what they call Level One and Level Two services. Level One services for students that are eligible under the IDEA are for students that are served from 1% to 49% of services. Level Two services are for students that are 50% to 100% of special education services. Based on those levels, the state has assigned a point value to each disability code. For instance, a student with autism that is served Level Two, so 50% to 100% services in special education, that is supported in a classroom setting with a para educator 100% of the time, counts for 2.5 points. For that same student in a Level Two classroom model that is not supported 100% of the time by a para educator within that classroom setting, they count for 3.3 points. So this is a process of caseload management that we are looking at twice a week now, on Mondays and on Fridays. As a team, we're looking at individual teacher caseloads, and then we're also looking at each school average. Based on our current state regulations, each school can carry an average of 20 points.
Then bringing up the end here, for the secondary program, when the master schedule is developed, what occurs most often is that I will have principals or an assistant principal or even instructional coordinator, but typically it's the principal go ahead and reach out in regards to their staffing needs for potential classes that have overflowed or individuals who are looking to incorporate a new course into a section, and how do we support that? And what does that look like? I can tell you that every time that I'm asked for a position, I do a calculation to see whether or not that position can be filled in-house and you can solve your own problem, or is there something that I need to go ahead and provide when we get together and I request through the HR process when we all sit down collaboratively to discuss. Sorry about that. So you will see that on this slide, the high school student teacher ratio, pupil teacher ratio is 21 to 1. Now, what that is, is what Ms. Balaico has just mentioned here a couple minutes ago, is that's an average. And essentially what that is, is that couples all four core areas, and it does not include yourself-contained classes. So when I see that 21 to 1 in the middle school at 24 to 1, again, that's all of your core content classes. Our number of classes that exist over 30 across the division, out of 2,412 classes at the high school level, 132 of those are over 30. But keep in mind that 72 of these are health and PE, and 15 are fine and performing arts. So out of the 2,054 classes offered at the middle school level, 203 are over 30. So that's 101 of these are health and PE, and then 22 are fine and performing arts programs.
For elementary, you'll see our K-2 primary averages at 20.2 students currently, and 3 through 5 at 21.4 as an average. I can tell you that 21 out of 51 grade levels, so looking across the 17 schools at each grade level, 21 of 51 of those grade levels exceed that average, and 26 of 51 grade levels in K through 2 exceed that average. And just a quick calculation, it would take 23 additional teachers for every school to meet that average K-5. I can tell you I like the looks of these numbers. I have hotspots in five schools that I'm watching very closely where the grade levels are exceeding or close to that 25, 26 mark. But the support to those students, those very diverse students that we are so proud of in those classrooms is really what I think would give us great bang for our buck. And I know that Mr. Blaine talks about that a lot, and supporting the students in the classroom with a variety of resources.
So I believe before we go on to the next section, it might be an opportunity for the Board to ask any questions relevant to the section that we just went over. Ms. Phelps.
So I might be beating a dead horse here again, but I listened to the, you talk about the perimeter and the guidelines for the VDOE and the middle school. An average for middle school English for VDOE guidelines are 24 to 1. And so I've addressed it before, my son's in a classroom 35 to 1, and it's not for any other reason that I say it, not that his teacher isn't great, but how can one teacher manage 35 students in English for a sixth grade? So this is very important to me for reading and writing, so when I see this, I'm hopeful that this budget session going around, that the positions that may be funded, the teacher positions, would be looked at, little individual site, to see how that can be handled, because it's definitely an impact on my son's learning. But the teacher herself, you know, she has a family, she has her time to, her free time, planning time that she has meetings to go to, and everything else that entails on classroom instruction. So it's one of my concerns because I'm in it, I've spoken about it, and that's just the way it is, I guess, here, and that's, and I have to accept it. And my son, we learn how to overcome and work through it with the guidance of his teacher, but hopefully we can look at the closer, have a closer look at the student-to-teacher ratio per the guidelines for VDOE. So that would be one of my highly suggested concerns to be looked at again.
Certainly.
Thanks.
Ms. Shelley.
Thank you. Ms. Richardson. Special education. Okay, caseloads, 20 points. That could be 20 students on one teacher's caseload, and I know that is state regs, and that's what the state says, and what I'm going to explain to everyone. Since I am a special education teacher, what that means is the teacher is managing 20 students. That would be writing, preparing, following IEPs for 20 students, planning all the meetings, following the students' goals, making sure the goals are being met, following, getting the progress notes out, watching, following the timelines, making sure all the accommodations are being met, and I know I'm not saying everything that, but for 20 students. And although 20 students might be, they might be one-point students, which means they are not, maybe not high need, it is still 20 students who they are managing those IEPs. Is there anything, I know this is state, has anything coming through the state that says that there would be more funding to reduce those numbers because we have more students in inclusion classes than we had years ago, and more students with more significant needs are in conclusion classes? So their point values are going down. Is there anything that the state is looking at to reduce those numbers?
Thanks, Ms. Shelley. At this time, no, the VDOE has not shared any information, nor has the legislature shared any new proposals for, you know, bills that would support such actions. However, it is part of the work that we have been doing through our SERVED project, really looking at caseload versus workload, and not just for our special education teachers, but also for our related services providers. A great deal of the feedback that we do hear from our general ed counterparts and colleagues is that, you know, having that inclusive setting while it is, you know, optimal because they are the content area experts, it is a challenge. And Mrs. Phelps, just to provide you some updated information, we're currently serving 916 students under Section 504. I had to find my report, I do apologize. So right now, no, there's no prospect for additional funding to support the inclusive setting. It goes back to us utilizing our current resources and being creative and doing what we do as a team twice a week, looking at caseloads, looking at the allocation of resources, looking at how we can change and reallocate things even mid-year if that's what's needed to meet the needs of our students. The greatest challenge that we have had this year is keeping up with the impact of disability of the students that have transferred into our school division. One area of surprise for us with students with severe disabilities, we had a higher number of transfers in that category than none like we'd ever seen before, especially at the elementary level. So while, because our child count itself has ticked up a little bit, we will get some additional funding, but it's not going to be nearly enough to offset what the current needs are.
Thank you. And then you mentioned 504s and the numbers over 900.
Yes.
Just as a reminder to our board members, that students under Section 504 also, although we get no additional funding for our 504 students, many of them require extra resources that there might have a read-aloud accom, that they do have accommodations, and many of those accommodations may require another person to support them for read-alouds, or just as an example. So just something else for the Board to remember when we're talking about allocation of resources, special education, our students with IEPs and our students with 504, all those no funding included, allocated, they are also, and they're not listed in our categories either, but there is another area of need for us as a Board to understand and remember. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps.
Can I just say something? I think the reason why, Tedra, we saw an uptick in the special education is because we have a good reputation. So you've built that reputation, so people want to come here for that, and I'm just, so I applaud you.
Well, for that, I will say thank you.
Okay.
I have an ELL question. What is our current ratio for our ELL teachers to students, and what is our goal? What would we like to see?
I believe we need to go to the bench for that question. We have Christine Lynch-Johnston, who oversees our L program. I do know that we have, last time I checked, about 1561 L students and about 20.
Seventy-two languages.
And 72.
Which you provided earlier.
That's correct. The ratio, I know that I gave LJ some homework to do, so I will ask LJ to go ahead and provide that to us. Thank you.
Sure, we are ever-changing. In the last month, we've had 41 new Ls enroll from October to November, but currently our ratio is about 1 to 54. Yes, 1 L to 54 teachers, and the goal for me would be about 1 to 35 would be a good goal. That's.
And we currently don't even have a full-time person at each school, correct? Because we only have a certain amount, and like, certain schools need 2.5, and one school needs 3, and another school gets .5, correct?
Correct. Correct, because there are schools that have.
And that's based on enrollment?
Yes, based on how many Ls there are.
So if you have 48, are you getting a full person, or because you're less than 54?
Well, it could be that you're.
Somewhere around there.
That you're somewhere around there, but it also really depends on the need as well, just like with TEDRA students, where some students need more support. Our newcomer students who have very limited English need more service time than our students with higher English proficiency. So that plays a role in that support as well, and how many teachers are there at the school.
And which schools, obviously that is even ever-changing, because I understand Harrison Road got an extra half a one since just the school year started because they had an influx of students, but which schools currently don't have one full position or in fraction of teachers?
Oh, there's a lot of them. Spotsy Middle, yeah, there's a lot of them that do not currently have Berkeley because there are two students there currently. So Berkeley does not have a full-time, Brock Road does not, Chancellor, Cortland, these are all the elementaries. Livingston, Riverview, Wilderness, those are all the elementaries. For middle school, it would be Freedom, Nye, Post Oak, all of them do not, with the exception of Battlefield and Chancellor. And then at the high schools, Riverbend does not have full-time, Spotsy High does not have full-time, and Cortland currently does not have full-time either. And they have had a significant influx of Level One students at Cortland this year, Cortland High School. A lot of schools.
Any other questions? I don't know whose turn it is.
Right. Good evening. Ms. Gaines. Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board members, Dr. Baker and Dr. Martin. At this time, staff would like to transition and provide you with some operating budget highlights that we hope will be useful as you prepare your budget. So number one, it is very common for the staff to be working on three budgets in one year. For example, we're closing out FY '18, we're executing FY '19, and we have begun to prepare the budget for FY 2020. So I want to first draw your attention to Slide 63. You will recall back on October the 8th, the School Board did approve your carryover. You'll basically see the areas here where we have FY '18 unspent revenues, 3.9 million. Basically here, you will see 1.4 million is the largest portion of this, which is in instruction. We also had 300,000 that was left over in the technology area that related to E-rate funds. So if you were to back out the 1.4 for state revenues, the 300,000 for E-rate funds, you would really be looking at a carryover of about 2.2 million. We're looking at Slide 64. We are very proud of the fact that 100% of the carryover is going back to students and staff. When you look here at instruction, 3.4 million, administration, 30,000, transportation for the high school supplements, 100,000 for furniture for the schools, 294,000 for technology for the students. Now look at Slide 65. This basically provides you with the breakdown that you approved on October 8th. Number one, the largest share that you'll see is the 1.4 million for curriculum resources. Keep in mind, we did receive 1.4 million in additional state funds because our student enrollment or ADM was higher than anticipated, so it makes natural sense for that 1.4 to go back to students. Also, you will recall your state budget amendment, that was for $870,000. Initially, that was approved by you, but it did not advance to the next level, so therefore many of these items here were basically back. So therefore, many of these items here were basically backfilling the state funds. Also, when you look at Slide 65, but I want to draw your attention to 66, some of that money is for OPEB. Now, what is OPEB? It basically covers benefits for retirees as it pertains to medical, dental and vision. We've always had these expenses. But in 2009, there was a new accounting rule that mandated that the OPEB liability be reported on the financial statements. A key point that we want to make here is reported. You're not required to fund it. But since that time, over the last 10 years, the school division has taken two courses of action to mitigate or lower this liability. Number one, we've created a trust fund. You'll see here back in 2011, 1.4 million. Then FY '14, we put in this account another million. We're excited to report that since that time, the trust fund balance is now 3.5 million. So what does this mean? This means that we have garnered 1.1 million in interest earnings. Therefore, it was a very prudent and responsible decision for the school board to implement a trust fund. This 1.1 million is a 46% increase over an eight-year period, where we have earned $140,000 each year. Number two, in order to mitigate our liability, in 2007, there was a policy change whereby in order to receive retiree medical benefits, you have to be with the school division for 15 years. 2009, there was another policy change whereby we put in place a flat dollar amount towards the employer contribution. According to Bolton Partners, these were significant changes. And if these changes had not been made, our liability would have been 56% higher than what it is today. So let's talk a little bit about debt service. In your folder, which is blue, I want to draw your attention to the materials that you will see inside this folder. If you look to the right of the folder, you will basically see a carryover request cover sheet. This particular item was presented to the county's finance committee on November the 20th. Based on what was presented, it was not, no action was taken, but the committee did recommend that it go to the board of supervisors tomorrow night. So you will be asked to bring this document with you tomorrow night. Also in your folder, you will see a document that speaks to a board of supervisor communication. This is basically where the school division has incurred a debt service savings of 2.6 million. If I draw your attention to the second page of this document, you will see that the county staff made a decision to present this particular item to their county finance committee on November the 20th. Prior to it going to the county's finance committee on November the 20th, it did go to the school's audit and finance committee on November the 19th. So what we're hoping to do now is to have a discussion about this tomorrow night with the board of supervisors. Also, we will provide you with a listing of projects, particularly in the CIP technology area. And then we'll be asking for your approval on your December the 10th meeting. So those would be the next steps for the 2.6 million dollar debt service savings. The key with this particular item is that these funds will have to be used for CIP, which we do not foresee an issue with that. So in actuality, this is some great news. So now that takes us to budget assumptions for FY-
Ms. Gaines, this might come up. I'm just going to ask a couple of quick questions because they could come up at the end anyway. And I imagine it'll be a part of discussion tomorrow evening. Both of those items are pending board of supervisor approval for appropriation, including the 2.6. So this school board will only be considering approval of the use of that, that fund if it's approved tomorrow night.
Correct.
I just want to make sure that part's clear. So it's not a definite that that will be on the agenda in December.
Correct.
The other thing, when you presented, and I've, I've asked about this history before, but for the board's interest, when the school division developed the trust fund for OPEB in FY 2011, did the county follow suit or when did the county develop the same trust fund?
At this time, this county has not yet developed a trust fund. They do not have one. But what they have done, they set aside funds in their reserve account, which is like their general fund.
Okay. And when did they begin to start setting aside funds for that? Do you know?
I want to say several years after us. It was more so recently, maybe like within the last three years or so.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
While you're on OPEB, I know that we, we get the report from the audit and finance committee, but could you share with the rest of the board what our advisor has advised us? That we are in a current good state and we are good for at least, he said, the 20-year outlook?
Yes. So in looking at our OPEB liability, we did have a conference call today with Kevin Binder. And he's also agreed, if the school board is willing, to have him come and present at one of your future budget work sessions. When you look at OPEB, you're basically looking at a long-term liability. The main point you want to remember is that we're currently paying all of our retiree health benefits through a method called Pay As You Go. That amount is $4 million. Also, in talking with Mr. Binder today, he has said that he commended us for the changes that the school board made over 11 years ago. If you had not made those changes, your liability would be 56% higher. Also, when you look at the liability, it's basically saying that you should set aside $19 million a year. Because you're already paying your 4 million, that leaves you with about 15 million. But because we made those changes in 2007 and 2009, every year, our liability is going down by almost $500,000. So you should not be alarmed that you have today a liability of 15 million because of the fact that in 2024, you're going to start to see that go down by $500,000 every year. So with that, I believe that we are in a good position. However, it is true that you've made a commitment to your retirees that you will provide them with certain benefits. So yes, you do want to be able to set those funds aside, but it is not required that you set aside $15 million a year. He also stated that in some school districts, not very many, but Hanover and Frederick County, they have made a decision not to offer any type of benefits to retirees. Staff is not recommending that. But that is an option that he could present to you if you choose to have that presentation in January.
And just to contrast with the, what the county has done, as Dr. Baker brought up at the beginning and was brought up in, in our joint audit session in 14 and 15 and 16, that we are in a different place as the county had because we started the trust then sooner. And they are still playing catch-up per se as far as OPEB goes. We are ahead of the game there.
That is correct. And then speaking to our audit and finance committee meetings, one of the reasons too that you see 429,000 before you today, we indicated that a policy that we could bring to the board for consideration, if we have carryover more than a million, maybe 5% could go into the carryover. If we have more than 2 million, then possibly 10% can go into the carryover. And if we have 3 million, then possibly 15% can go into the carryover. So with that regard, I do believe that we're making strides to fund it on a more systematic and methodical method, which is definitely best practices. But there is no school division that we are aware of that has fully funded the OPEB liability. Okay. So that takes us to Slide 60. Yes, ma'am.
Can we ask questions?
Sure.
Can we ask questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Hey, is it possible to send that information from the audit guy that you spoke to today? What was his name?
Kevin Binder.
To send that information to all the school board members?
Sure.
What he said? That way we have it?
Sure.
Well, I have it down so I can go back and read it.
Okay, we'll do that.
All right. Thanks.
I think it would be beneficial if he, as he offered, just to give a presentation and then it can be referenced by the community and the board as well.
Okay, sounds great.
I would like to, I would like to have that, just an email with a, a, a short summary that what you just spoke to, said. So I have it for my records.
Sure.
Not that I won't take his presentation when he comes and offer him to come here, but just so I have it current, so I can have it in my notes. That's all I'm asking for.
Sure. We can send that tonight. There were two email correspondences that he did share today. So we can do that. No worries. So that takes us to Slide 69, which is your FY 2020 budget assumptions, just coming from staff to open up the discussions. So number one, you will be aware, we do basically have six major budget drivers. Normally, we have salaries and benefits, which includes your health insurance, your VRS. We also have our special education program as well as debt service, as well as FTEs for resources for our students. The first assumption that you will see here on this slide is a minimum 4% pay increase for all staff, teachers, staff, as well as administrators, including the Evergreen Study, Year 2 of 3. We do have some good news to share. For right now, based on the information that has come in through Anthem and based on some changes in methodology, we're not looking at a health insurance increase for FY 2020, neither for the employee nor for the employer. Historically, that cost at about 10% will cost us about $2.5 million. So that is awesome news. To add to that, for 2020, we are projecting that we will not see an increase either in our VRS rate. Over the years, that could range anywhere from $1 million to $2 million. So right there, we have avoided about a $4.5 million increase in budgetary needs. In terms of FTEs, we are going to be recommending some additional resources to support students. You've already heard from Ms. Richardson in regards to the special ed enrollment going up. Also, you're looking at some non-compensation reallocations. We've heard from several board members that you would like for us to consider some additional allocations to support programs at schools such as band allocations. We've also heard from board members to consider an increase in stipend rates. That could either be a flat rate or that could also be a percentage of salary. We've also heard from board members in regards to maybe looking at the substitute rate going up. And we will also see a increase in our debt service based on the draft plan that was presented tonight, although we know that you will be making some modifications to that potentially. So just to provide you with some of the trends and what the numbers have looked like over the years. The first line you will see is contracted employee pay increases. You can basically see this is a five-year trend. And if you look specifically, let's say if I looked at an example of a teacher, if you were to look at FY '15 through FY '19 and add these numbers up, you will see that teachers over the last five years had a 14.5% increase in pay, which was over a five-year period at 3% increase each year. You can also see the employer health rate increases. You'll also see the increases in VRS. You'll also see adopted FTE adjustments. You'll also see that the athletic fee was sunsetted. You'll also see that every year we do reallocate non-compensation budgets. Historically, we've had increases in both our stipend rates as well as our substitute rates. We did restore the pilot cafeteria aid program and we are looking to continue to maintain that. And we did restore a pilot activity bus program. So those are just some trends there for consideration. As we get additional guidance, we'll add the column for FY 2020. So we've spoken a little bit about the expenditure side in terms of assumptions. On tonight's staff, we'd like to share with you information on Slide 71 that speaks to revenues. Keep in mind, this does exclude your CIP and use of fund balance. Because we do have a state template and they do provide you with a two-year budget, on today, we are able to share with you some preliminary numbers for 2020. But keep in mind, the governor's budget will be out come mid-December. At that point in time, we will provide you with the updated numbers. But for right now, as of today, you can see that we're projecting a sales tax increase, 563,000. If you look at state funds, you're looking at an increase potentially of 4.2 million. And a lion's share of this, 1 million is coming in from lottery funds and about 3 million is coming in for a compensation supplement. Now keep in mind, the supplement is basically for a pay raise either for FY '19 or FY '20. And because the school board already gave an increase in FY '19, we're already covered with this particular supplement of the 2.8. So you can use this however you choose to, whether to support the additional increase that you want to provide for '19, et cetera. When you look at the other lines of revenue sources for federal, the local and the other, at this point in time, you do not see an increase just yet. We are not projecting level, but right now, these numbers are unknown. But the point that we would like to make here is that this is when it would be very beneficial if we had a revenue sharing agreement with the county because you could use that tool as a long-term planning and you could predict, you know, what you could use and what you would have. So those are just some numbers we wanted to share there.
Mrs. Gaines?
Yes.
I wanted you to get through revenue because you had started, but Mr. Twig and Mr. Bradwell had a question.
Just one point, if I may. I think I know what you're, you're saying when you identify band program. But please, everybody know that our entire music program needs enhanced. They're spending a grand a year, each parent for each student. We've got to throw as much of that as we can back into the cost of doing business, just like we did for the sports programs recently, in recent years. So that's the point I want to emphasize in this board and particularly me. I'll be looking for that in our proposed budget. Thank you.
The, the point that I wanted to make about, there's a couple of points I wanted to make. First one is stipends. When you look at the stipends from that picture, it gives the impressions that we have been paying competitive stipends, which is false. When you look at the stipends that we've paid coaches over the past 10 years when they took a 20% pay cut and, and hung in there with us, they're still a decade behind. So when you look at that, that slide, there's more to the statistic than what you see. And I just wanted to make sure we clarify that. And the other thing I wanted to do was salute staff and this board for taking some politically tough positions on health insurance costs. That's a major driver. And over the past couple of years, this school board saved a good deal of money. I think it was right around $3.5 million. That's a lot of money just by controlling the cost of health insurance. My question is, is how much do you think we, or how much do you project that we are going to save this year? I know there's not going to be an increase, but how much are we going to save this year in terms of gleaning savings from health insurance?
We do have Anthem in the audience, but can we hold that just for one moment, Mr. Bradwell? Because we do have a few slides where we're going to speak to health insurance. Yep.
Ms. Phelps?
Can I just ask you something real quick? The carryover from the state was 864?
So that was not carryover?
I mean, the additional funding from the state.
It was about $878,000. Yes, ma'am.
So is it possible if we have that, the future, this budget year and next budget year, to put that back into the teachers' pockets and, and, you know, to allocate it back to the teachers?
That 4.8 is now a part of the baseline. So when you saw that 4.8 for 2020, that is included in that particular number. And I want to defer to Dr. Baker because I believe he wants to share something.
I just want to make sure. So the additional state funding was really, I guess, used to supplant local funding. It was used to replace previous. So we didn't have any additional funding total to give to anybody. Is that correct for this past fiscal year?
That is correct.
Okay.
And that's why you see here from the carryover of the three point eight, we're really saying that because we did not receive those state funding, that we're using the carryover to backfill the state revenue and additional funds that were denied. Yes, ma'am, you're welcome. Okay. And then to add to Mr. Braswell's point, um, in your folder to the left, you will see a current listing of the sub-rates as well as the stipend rates. So as you review these, if there are certain areas that you want the staff to cost out, um, we will certainly be willing to do that. Okay? So that takes us through revenues. So if you look at page seventy-two in terms of the Evergreen update, um, we did want to do a quick recap. Um, you will recall last year, a four percent pay raise for teachers and support staff, two percent pay raise for administrators. You were looking at six point eight million. Evergreen year one of three was five hundred and thirty-one thousand in regards to bringing up the bring-to-minimum as well as the classification study in terms of ITAs, peer educators, bus drivers, bus aides. Um, when you look at year two, um, four point, four percent pay raise for all staff is seven point two. Keep in mind, that's because now you have a higher baseline, so it's compounded. And then the Evergreen, uh, two of three is approximately five hundred thousand. So right there, you're looking at about seven point seven million. And if you have state revenues coming in of about four point eight, you already see that you need additional funds.
Any rumors of the state matching for pay raises this year?
Well, right now, what we do know in the twenty twenty budget, they have included a compensation supplement of two point eight million. Yeah, it's about two point eight million. So that is good news. And they did promise that, uh, year one of the biennium and said that the funds will be coming in the second year. But hopefully, maybe when the governor presents mid-December, it could be more. So in order to understand, um, where we are with the debt service calculation, keep in mind, your CIP does have an impact on your operating budget. So what we did here was basically to show you for two thousand and nineteen, the original debt service calculation, twenty-seven million. Because we're not being required to make a principal payment this year of about two point six, the number did go down slightly. Then when you look at the five-year, uh, CIP for twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, you can see an estimate of twenty-seven point eight million. Keep in mind, the projected debt service is based on FY nineteen interest rates. So once we've received the twenty twenty rates, we will update these numbers and share that with the board. But the good news here is that there has been years when your debt service has gone up significantly, anywhere from one to three million. So right now, as you prepare your budget for twenty twenty, you have many things that are working in your favor. Number one, no increase in health insurance, no increase in VRS, a moderate increase in debt service, which means now you can take these funds and reallocate them and not have to cover these items. We did also want to point out ADM. Keep in mind, the ADM is very different than student enrollment. Student enrollment basically is at a point in time, whereas your average daily membership is an average over a period of time. Your student enrollment is used for your CIP plan, whereby your ADM is used for budgeting purposes. So you can kind of see that it's been pretty much level, but at the same time, we have to be very conservative when it comes to your ADM, because if you over-project, that means that you're projecting funds that you may not receive. So it is best to be conservative when it comes to ADM. Here, it just gives you some definitions, which you're already familiar with. So that brings us to health insurance. Um, just a couple of points that we want to make here. Um, you do recall, five years ago, back in FY two thousand and seventeen, um, the school board did embark upon creating a five-year health insurance strategic plan. As indicated by Mr. Braswell, you can see in FY twenty eighteen, um, the measures that were taken to modernize our health insurance plan. Twenty eighteen, we did save one point six million. Twenty nineteen, you can see the methods that were taken here. We saved an additional one point six million for a total savings of three point eight million. We've also been working very closely with the Employee Compensation Focus Group for twenty twenty, and they were delighted to hear that there will be no rate increases for the employee or the employer for health insurance for twenty twenty. But also, we have really focused our last three meetings on high-deductible health plans. So when looking at the high-deductible health plans, we did reach a consensus at our last meeting that this is something that we do want to recommend for the school board for consideration. What this is going to involve is Anthem assisting us with employee, uh, information sessions, whereby we educate the employees prior to the next enrollment. So potentially, we could have meetings as early as December through March, so that they can be educated. I do want to emphasize that the high-deductible health plan would be in addition to the two plans that we currently have. Key Care Expanded will stay intact as well as your Key Care five hundred. We do envision, Mr. Braswell, that by implementing these plan, this plan, there will be some potential savings. But today, we're not in a position to give you an exact number, because there are some key decisions that we're asking Anthem to price out. Number one, on this high-deductible health plan, um, what will be the employer contribution? What would be the, uh, maximum out-of-pocket? What would be the premium? So there are still a lot of decisions that we need to make as it pertains to this.
I just want to add one other piece to consider. Uh, to encourage, uh, the use of high-deductible plans, we may want to consider some form of incentive, uh, for the Health Savings Plan to give people an opportunity to take advantage of it. Uh, I think in the long run, we'll glean a lot of savings if we can encourage more, especially our younger people, uh, to take advantage of the high-deductible plans. It's going to not only be, i- 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 the short-term investment will create a long-term, uh, savings that we'll all glean from.
Excellent point. And that is something that the Employee Compensation Focus Group did discuss. Uh, we were basically, um, creating a range that we could particularly have maybe Anthem price out somewhere between twenty-five hundred, maybe to, to five thousand. So yes, we're going to definitely consider that. Also, for twenty twenty-one, um, you'll see an option here that will definitely save, um, some funds based on some numbers coming in from our healthcare consultant in terms of looking at HMO network savings, um, which will not include referrals. But again, this is something that we would have to work very closely with Anthem. Um, we would need to let them know if this is something that we're interested in, so that they could begin a HMO network campaign. So this is something that we want to bring to your attention. We also tossed around for twenty twenty-two, starting to look at maybe an onsite medical clinic or an onsite pharmacy. So these are just some of the items, um, in the five-year plan. But we do feel very confident that we will save additional funds in twenty twenty by looking at a high-deductible health plan. It will depend on how many employees will actually enroll in that. So I am going to ask if Jeff Hartman and Jane, uh, Crenshaw would join us at this time at the podium, because they're going to give you some highlights in terms of a high-deductible health plan as they position themselves. So right before we get into there, two slides. Um, staff did want to provide you with some census data based on some of the decisions that you made for FY nineteen as it pertained to your budget. You will see that the Key Care two hundred program was eliminated. We only had a hundred and twenty-six employees on this plan, and quite a few of them did migrate to the Key Care five hundred plan. Uh, what we did want to point out is single. You will see that particular tier for Key Care Expanded, that did go up by thirteen point six one percent. If you look at Key Care five hundred, that did go up by twenty-six point five three percent. You'll also see employee plus spouse increased by two digits, fourteen percent. Employee plus child, that did also increase by two digits, seventeen percent. And family increased by twenty-one percent. So we did see a migration off of the Key Care two hundred as well as the Key Care Expanded Plan onto the Key Care five hundred. So that is some data that we'll continue to monitor, and we'll bring that back to you, um, on an annual basis. So overall, we still do have about seventy-two percent of our employees who are on our health insurance plan. So that brings us to our high-deductible health plan and HSA overview. Um, Mr. Jeff and Ms. Jane?
Thank you, LaShawn. Good afternoon, or evening, actually. Um, I'm Jane Crenshaw. And what I'm going to do here first is just kind of give a high-level overview of, um, the HSA and the high deduct, the high deductible health plan, the HSA, how they work together. And then we have an example of the plan design that we presented last week to the committee. So on this particular slide, we have, um, the high deductible health plan. It is a qualified high deductible health plan, which means that the IRS kind of governs the rules behind it. They set the guidelines as far as the deductibles and the out-of-pocket maximums are concerned. They also allow you to open a health savings account if you're qualified to do so. And under the qualified, and under the health savings account, you have certain dollar limits that you can contribute into that account each year. Also, under these plans, you're responsible for covered medical and prescription drug costs until the deductible has been satisfied. One of the exceptions to that is that preventive care is covered at one hundred percent, and that is a requirement of the Affordable Care Act. From there, then, your medical expenses are covered, um, in the case of our example, at one hundred percent, and copays would apply to prescription drugs. There are some other, um, co-insurance options that are out there, but we, uh, gave the example and used that example to the committee last week, where it pays at a hundred percent, uh, after the deductible. Once you meet the, uh, maximum out-of-pocket limit for the plan, it pays, again, with our example, one hundred percent of all covered services for medical and, uh, RX from participating providers for the remainder of the ca- calendar year. And again, that was our example. Under, oh, I'm doing a different slide, LaShawn. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Oh, okay. Um, under the health savings account, um, again, you can fund that account through, um, your own payroll deductions or if the schools makes a contribution into that account, um, they can do so as well. Those funds are to pay for your qualified medical expenses, which include dental and vision. Uh, or you can leave your money in your HSA for future expenses or reimbursements. Once the money goes into the HSA, it's yours forever, and then unused money carries over from year to year with no maximum balance. Okay? And then, again, um, we can switch slides, LaShawn. Uh, again, we gave a, a example last week when we had our committee meeting. And with this particular example, we used a three thousand dollar individual deductible as the example with a six thousand dollar family deductible. And we created an embedded deductible as our example. And what that means is that if you are the only person in your family that is incurring expenses or the only one that is, um, sick or ill, then the deductible stops at three thousand for that individual. And then the family members make up the rest of the deductible for the family deductible. So that's considered an embedded, um, deductible. The out-of-pocket maximum that we chose for this particular example is four thousand dollars for an individual and eight thousand for family. And after the three thousand dollar deductible has been satisfied, then your benefit starts paying at one hundred percent on all of your services, with the exception of prescription drugs. So you can switch slides, LaShawn. So the prescription drugs, then, after the deductible has been satisfied, goes to a copay structure. So you are responsible for the entire cost of the medication until your deductible has been satisfied, at which point you would pay copayments for your prescription drugs. Then, after you've reached an additional one thousand dollars in prescription drug copays, then your out-of-pocket maximum has been satisfied for the entire year. And at that point, all medical and prescription drug expenses are covered at a hundred percent. Any questions on that? No?
Okay, thank you.
LaShawn, I just wanted to go back to the slide seventy-eight and just point out that the, all the changes we had to make last year in the health insurance, despite all that, we still had seventy-one more people enroll in our health insurance than were there the year before, correct?
Correct, yes, ma'am.
They were new enrollees.
Yes, more than likely, those were our new employees who had come in to work for the school division. Yes, ma'am. Okay, so the last two slides, basically, um, as you know, tomorrow night, um, you will be receiving the results of the twenty eighteen CAFR, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. Um, with that being said, we did want to share with you briefly tonight the audit results from our school activity fund audits. And we do have a binder to give to each school board member, um, before you leave tonight. But I do want to take a moment and just celebrate and give kudos to our schools who have done a phenomenal job in making sure that they receive clean audits. Um, from the bookkeeper to the principal, to the teachers, to the ADs, to the coaches. Um, really quickly, you'll see back in FY ten, and also to my staff as well, um, back in FY ten, of the thirty-one schools and centers, we had three schools who had received a clean audit, ten percent. Based on our latest audit results on page eighty-four, you'll basically see we have twenty-one of the thirty-one, or sixty-eight percent, almost seventy percent. So this is huge, and again, I want to congratulate our schools, our principals, and our bookkeepers for doing an awesome job. Um, as a reporting, this is a new requirement that has come down from the federal government. While there are instructional and testing requirements, there's also a reporting requirement. And what this basically is saying, starting with FY nineteen, which is the current year that we're in, the finance staff, working with the instructional staff, will be required to provide a financial report of all personnel expenses as well as non-personnel expenses for every single school. So what we've had to do is to expand our chart of accounts. Um, we've had to take every single teacher, peer educator, and make sure that they were charged to their school site. There were some exceptions that we made whereby some staff have remained reporting at the district level. So to provide some examples, school social workers, psychologists, OT, PTs, bus drivers, and bus aides. So in working with my staff, in order to implement this new reporting requirement, we have made a decision to take a phased approach. But this is something, um, that we will be sharing with the school board prior to the reports being released and posted, um, on the Virginia website. So this is just something that we wanted to make you guys aware of. This is a new requirement. So at this time, I will turn it over to Dr. Baker.
Uh, board members, I'm, uh, not going to, uh, provide any other remarks after you weigh in on this, uh, last part. Um, I see I'm on camera, I was looking up at the screen, I'm sorry. So I, I believe it's even in the, it may even be in state code, that the superintendent's job is to present to a school board a needs-based budget. Um, as I approached the seventh, um, budget development process for me and the staff, again, I can't say enough good things about our staff, both the cabinet level, uh, all the way to our principals, to our teachers, to, we just have, I'm just blessed to have such a, an amazing staff. But I'm going to ask, uh, something that I have not asked in the past before we go into the, um, you know, the process of developing, uh, a budget proposal. And that is especially upon hearing, uh, a lot of the feedback this evening about costs, um, but yet at the same time, also hearing about needs. And hopefully, you've gotten a wealth of information to, um, help to, to highlight the many needs that we have. But I'm going to ask that, as you, each of you share what you would like to see prioritized and included. and included in this budget. I would appreciate, as explicit as you are able to provide it, in terms of amounts and numbers. Because each year, in trying to develop a needs-based budget, the reality of fiscal constraints at the federal, state, and local level are unfortunately factored in to the development of that budget, knowing that there are many needs that we may not be able to bring into a proposal, because we just know that the reality of the funding is simply not there. And it is my desire and the staff's desire to put the school board and our local body in the best position to be able to accomplish success in increasing funding and supporting the many needs that we have. But I share with our folks, especially, I think it's fitting as we go into strategic planning process, that if you have many priorities, in the end, you have none, because it becomes difficult to sort through the many priorities, because a priority means something that comes up as, as some, above other things. It supersedes other things. So as I listen tonight, I'm hoping that you can share explicitly what should be the top priorities in the development of this budget. And if you would like to provide an exhaustive list of things that you would like in this budget, we will be taking notes. At the same time, if you, as an individual board member or as a body, expect this budget to be feasible in terms of cost, meaning that you do not want to see this superintendent request an amount of funding that has a significant gap, which at this point, I am concerned about the state's funding. And I will just provide one reference to that before I turn it over to you. I, along with several staff members, and I know Dr. Meyer came to a summit on the teacher shortage in Virginia. And many folks weighed in on strategies and ideas and innovations and ways to mitigate and address that teacher shortage at the state level and at the local level. Maybe I've, I've just been part of those conversations for too long, but it seemed to me that many, many things were possible to try to mitigate the teacher shortage. But there was one area, when it came up, that there was a big challenge sign put by in terms of a strategy. And that was funding increasing teacher salaries. That all things are possible in terms of legislation and reform and local strategies, but when it comes to funding, well, now that's going to be a challenge. And so, as I hear feedback from this board and from our community about all the things that we need to be addressing better, from class sizes to salaries to additional resources that we need today, not based on a vision of the future, that we just need today, then I would appreciate, as explicit as you can provide it, what we should cut as well. Because I don't believe that there will necessarily be the resolve to fully fund at any level all the many needs that have been identified tonight, not just for one fiscal year, but for multiple fiscal years. I would appreciate knowing, is there something that we can do without or reduce within the conversation of cost? Because if cost is going to be the number one thing we consider when developing a needs-based budget, then I'm going to need to know, along with the many things we need to add to the budget for next year, I'm going to need to know what we need to take away. Or, I would like the direction that we should develop it and not be as concerned about what the potential budget gap would be. So I appreciate that consideration as each of you weigh in, and I thank you, because it's a very difficult process every year, and you have a lot to consider. Thank you.
This will start our guidance session. Mr. Blaine, would you like to start us off?
Well, let me think a little bit more.
Mr. Twig.
Thank you all very much for the presentation tonight, and we'll provide due diligence on our end and, and hope we can make everything work out. Thank you.
Mr. Braswell.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, I'd like to respond to the comments that Dr. Baker made. I concur with you fully that we need to ensure that we have a sustainable budget that puts us in a competitive position to attract and retain teachers at Spotsylvania County schools. I, I think that's first and foremost, not only in terms of compensation, but some other benefits that makes us much more attractive, that will make us much more attractive to bringing teachers to this division. You know, not only, you know, compensation or reimbursement for some of their educational classes that are required, but there's some other things that I know that can be incentives so that we can get or command the attention of a very scarce resource, which are qualified teachers to come and teach in Spotsylvania County. I think that gives us a competitive edge, not only in the short term, but also in the long run. It's always been proven that it's a lot cheaper to retain in qualified, highly qualified teachers, so that they stay here, than having a revolving door with folks coming in each and every year. That's much more expensive. So I would say to you, that would be my priority. I'm appreciative of the fact that we have tackled a very tough issue in health insurance and that cost driver. This board, a couple of years ago, took a politically unsavory position of making some structural changes to health insurance. But it was a cost driver that needed to be dealt with. And I'm really excited that the idea of offering, as a cafeteria, if you will, a high deductible plan, which I think would be very beneficial for a lot of younger teachers, and they'll be able to not only save with an HSA in conjunction with the high deductible plan, they'll be able to use that in their future retirement planning, because you can use those resources, I mean, that health savings plan, not only for other health benefits that come up that require your attention, but you can use them later in life for Medicare supplement plans. You can use it later in life for long-term care insurance. There's a variety of different things that you can use those health savings accounts for. And for younger employees to take full advantage of those and are educated in a way that they can maximize that benefit, is going to give us a competitive edge over other divisions. So I'm really excited about that. And one of the things I want to see, we talked about it last year, and we started the pilot Activity Bus program, and I've heard a lot of good things about it. I'd like to receive a formal report as to how we're doing with the Activity Bus, and if there's an opportunity to expand that in some ways. There was a time when all schools enjoyed Activity Buses in Spotsylvania County. They provide benefits not just for athletics, they provide tremendous leverage for other activities. And, and I'd like to find out, you know, what it would take to do some form of expansion in that regard. And finally, I'd like for us, again, to look at the stipends. Make it sure that we're doing right by our coaches. I know Dr. Meyer had mentioned about a percent of pay, I think that's really interesting. I would like to also make sure that we scrub it properly to ensure that we're rewarding all of those that participate in, in some way to add value to our children's lives that are there properly recognized by a stipend, which doesn't clearly pay nearly enough for what they do, but I think it gives us a competitive advantage in terms of recruiting. So to answer Dr. Baker's question, what would my priority be? It's all based around providing, putting us in a, a, a position where we have a competitive advantage in terms of recruiting and retaining the best teachers in this area because of the unique teacher shortage that we have to address. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps.
Thank you, everybody, for your time. And to address Dr. Baker, my priority has always been and will be the safety of our students and our staff and our schools. And, and I think we're on the road there with the implementation that we have, that I saw this evening come through. And, and so a solution would be, if you, you know, want a cause and effect, a solution that I would have, or a thought that I would have, is SROs in every school, however, look at the SSOs in the schools, in the high school level. However, I don't know if it's through the General Assembly yet or not, or if it's coming down the pike, as far as retired police officers. You know, a bill, I did some research on it, and a bill that was coming up where it could be brought in front of the General Assembly was to employ retired police officers in that, in, in order that it wouldn't, for their, so it wouldn't affect their VRS. Okay? And so that might be a solution for my concern of school safety to, to implement that. And I also, I could go on, I probably should ask for the courtesy from the superintendent to allow me the opportunity to speak to other staff and my constituents, to see what, what their desires are. But I do know for me, that I have been an advocate for, was to make sure that our schools are safe at all areas. So that might be a double-edged sword there, however, might be something to look into and speak to the, our delegate, however that might work. But, and I'll be sure to supply Dr. Baker with the lists of other concerns or suggestions from the community, if they want to email me, that would be great, too. And I'll be glad to pass that along. And that's all I got, thanks.
Dr. Meyer.
I think what was highlighted this evening in terms of the compensation plan for 4% is a definite. It continues the plan year two. Class size continues to be an issue, and I think, you know, we can't achieve everything in one year, but we need to keep it on the, on the horizon and continue to address our, our teacher class sizes, especially those which were highlighted this evening in some of our areas where we're having larger class sizes of middle school and high school, other than on the health and PE side or the fine arts side. But those classrooms, we need to be addressing. The stipends as a percent, I brought that up during budget, because I really want us to look at that as a way so that there is, so that our teachers and others who are doing, going beyond their normal duty responsibilities, account for inflation. Otherwise, if it's a flat fee and it's been that way for 10 years, it really is not worth the same anymore, and it never has accompanied the rate of inflation. I put it again as a percent, I think will help to address that. With the profile of a graduate, you know, we do need to begin the journey of pathways, and we need to be addressing our students. We need to have that vision of all of our students, not just those that are college-bound. And I think, you know, in our six-year plan, that's something that, I don't know whether we'll begin in this year's budget, but to the extent that we were talking about the teacher academy, where we grow our own, that definitely makes a lot of sense, because we know we have vacancies, we know we're going to have openings, and we can clearly give good orientation to our young adults who want to be teachers and give them all the preparation that they need, and we can definitely grow our own. We've done it before as career switcher plans, you know, why can't we do it as, as an academy? Talking about ban in athletics, and I'm not sure if, under allocations to the schools, whether that still exists on that Excel sheet, ban athletics, is it consolidated into one or is it split, or is it no longer exists, is the question.
Based on what I saw, Dr. Meyer, I did not see that it existed. So that's what staff was going to cost out. What if we were to bring it back and maybe apply a flat dollar amount per student? So we're going to bring you some scenarios. But it's not an itemized line item.
Okay. At one time, it was, and at one time, it was X amount of so many thousand dollars was banned slash athletics. And if that was still there, my comment would be, we need to break it apart and give ban due credit in athletics, because otherwise, neither gets the credit, you know, or it's gets split, or it's not enough to accomplish. The other thing we're getting into, if we have to deal with ban uniforms and things like that, we used to have something where that was covered as a special capital cost, because every 10 to 15 years, those have to be replaced or whatever. Those kind of costs, you know, we need to account for, and I can truly see where athletics, because of helmets and all those things, should have a set amount, and ban likewise should be treated with equal priority. So, I mean, that's where I'm coming from on the allocation side. With that, thank you, Madam Chair.
This is Shelley.
Thank you. I'm going to start with pay. I like the 4%. If the state is going to be giving more for SOQ positions, does that mean our number would go up a little bit as well? I'm tired of people saying, well, teachers went into their job knowing they weren't going to make any money. Well, when I went into my position, when I started teaching in the 80s, it's, it was a lot different than it is now. There were no standardized tests, there were no, the records and, and things that, that the teachers had to do. It was different than what the teachers have to do now. And I apologize if this is offensive to anyone, but I also think that if education was a more male-dominated field, the pay would be better as well. But I think it's time that we, and we are working on that in Spotsylvania, and I, and I'm happy that we are working on our salaries for our teachers and our staff members. But what, we have to compete, because Culpeper is getting ready to start, their teachers at $50,000 as their starting salary in Culpeper, county away, they're looking at starting at 50. They're, they're, so they're looking at starting it at 50, getting it there within the next few years. Stafford is looking at a 5% or more increase, is what I'm hearing. So we have to compete because of the teacher shortage. And we want to be able to get the best and the brightest and keep them here. So if we wanted to start looking at something for longevity, then that might be something we need to start looking at as well, a longevity bonus of some sort. But now, going on to other, and another, my biggest priority, and this goes with Ms. Phelps' safety, is mental health support for our students, and then our staff. Our students are suffering so, from so many childhood trauma episodes, that we need, they need more mental health support. So I really feel that we need to be adding social workers, we need to have a minimum of one in each of our buildings, some of our buildings who are, that are higher needs should have two. If we can't have social workers, then let's get more counselors or that are, that have been clinically trained. been clinically trained, or our school psychologists that aren't just doing testing, that are doing the, what the school psychologist clinical studies so that they can be working with our students as well. We have mental health support people in our division, but they have so many other things pulling them in each and every direction, just like every one of our staff members. So I know that's, it's people, and people cost money. But I think having those people would be helping our students, it would be safety. More people in the building, talking to our students about their mental health. We've talked about class sizes. That in itself, I think, would support safety as well because if the fewer students in your class, in a classroom, there may be fewer behavior issues because the teacher can be more, and the students can all have been more individualized support. I've brought up the amusement programs most, many times, so I'm going to continue, you know, with that. I think we can have a very strong budget. I am worried that we are going to have a gap because we do have needs, and our students are the reason we're here, and we need to support our students. And to support our students, we have to make sure we have the best and the brightest staff members, and that means having to, being able to pay them the way they, they deserve to be paid because they have the greatest, the most important job in the world is educating our students. And ours, because we got to remember, guys, your doctors, your lawyers, your astronauts, they all started with a teacher. The teachers are our main resource for our students, and I think we need to remember that and show them that. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Ms. Phelps.
I did forget one thing on my notepad here. Since you were busy taking notes, I just wanted to say, the, we discussed the band fees, athletic fees for the band, but however, if you could do the cost analysis from the transportation, the fees from the transportation from, that the schools charge the band parents to see how that can offset the band parents expenses. And the choir.
Of course.
Somebody just, chorus, choir. And maybe that's a good thing, since you were taking notes, I forgot, I had that on my list, so you can look at that. Okay. Thanks.
Mr. Blaine, it's your turn.
I would like to put into perspective where we are. We have approved something like 15,000 home sites last couple of years, and we're beginning to see that construction going on all over. Our county government has a major responsibility right now, and that is to attract quality business. And quality business, first of all, says what kind of a school district, district do you have that are going to serve our employees? And secondly, they ask, and the county budget or county people want to have, the skills of high school graduates can, can be employed and trained, hopefully, by these exact businesses. So it comes down to kind of a, a mental attitude, I think, of inability as, as well. Last time I looked, in Spotsylvania, we spend about $1,000 per year, per student, less than the state average. And I've been scolded because when you state, take state averages, we get some very high-income districts. But guess what? We compete with those districts when we hire teachers. People can go a little bit north of here, and we know that they have better salaries. So we are in a highly competitive situation. We, we must match our speech and our desire for our children with our ability or our, our decision to make, put in the effort that's necessary to do so. And I think that we're, we're able to do that, frankly. Frankly, I have more people come to me and say, why aren't you spending more on my kids? Why aren't you spending more on education? Not, why are you spending so much, very frankly? And we are in a position where we, we are in, able to see what is needed, and we have to allow ourselves the desire and the decision, frankly, to provide the funds that we need to, that we need, that we need. And if we were to change from $1,000 up to the state average in what our students get, 24,000 students, $1,000 per student, that's, would be a nice income if we were to be able to attack that average. And I think that we have the ability, and I think our parents, frankly, when it gets down to it, will spend more money on our children and their education when push comes to shove than other things. Thank you.
I concur with most of my board member's suggestions this evening. And again, as Dr. Baker asked to begin with, everybody made suggestions, but no one pointed out what they thought we should cut. So it seems like everybody, all six, are good with the budget gap because there were no suggestions to make any cuts when they suggested additions. So with bearing that in mind, I, I concur with most of the board members that pay should be our, our number one, not just teachers, our pairs and support staff and, and positions as well. I totally agree with Ms. Shelley on mental health support. It is an ongoing need, and we definitely need to, to focus on making sure that our schools are fully staffed there. But as pointed out earlier, our ELL ratio is, is definitely needs help. So if we could focus on that, one in each school is obviously ideal, but I understand if we only have two in some schools that, that you may need, need to share them. But I think as 54 students for one caseload, one teacher is, is difficult. So I would like to see that, able to provide a better ratio to the students. And we, as pointed out last year, we have one of the lowest administrator-to-student ratios in the state. We also have even lower home office-to-student ratio. And I would like, love to see a countywide literacy coordinator. I think that is a position that we, we used to have and had to get cut, and I think it would be very beneficial to have a countywide literacy coordinator. I would also like to see some information, I don't think it would be very expensive to employ, and I don't think that it would be a bad idea to try to incorporate Saturday School at all of our high schools instead of just Cortland. And Mr. Coway could give us a lovely presentation on the results he had had on that, but it's, it seemed to be a wonderful opportunity for students to take advantage of, even if they aren't being sent there for punishment. We had a lot of students volunteer to go have access to the computer system and get other credits knocked out and out of the way. And it'd be really nice if, as we're looking into the Activity Bus program, just figuring out how we could maybe fund some transportation to Saturday School because it is a good program at Cortland. So it'd be nice if we could offer it around the county. I just want to stress, though, that as we embark on every budget season, and this is exactly what Dr. Baker just asked before we spoke, we have, our job is to do a needs-based budget, and we all just put out there needs that we need to fund. And we were asked specifically, if you do not want to see a budget gap, please, after your need that you state, also state what you're willing to see to be defunded in order to pay for your program. And no one gave those options, and no one ever does because it's a hard, it's a hard choice. But every year, Dr. Baker's faced with that choice, Ms. Gaines faced with that choice, and we have to make the budget numbers work. So that is a choice that we always, always are faced with, and you have, that's where priorities come in. And you have to phase in certain programs and phase out other programs, and, and that's why change doesn't happen overnight. And like, it took us four years to see the activity fee go down. It might take a couple of years to get the level of band and chorus support that we would all like to see happen. I think a great start would be the transportation. You know, one phase at a time, might not be able to do it all at once, but I think it's definitely able, we were able to do stipends at $5 increase a year. And Dr. Meyer's suggestion to see it maybe as a percentage is a wonderful start now to try to do those changes. Our five-year health insurance plan, what, that we were changing, it's, it's the way that we have to do things because we can't do it all at once. We can't do all the priorities all at one time. So I just want to make sure that everybody knows that when we ask for these things, that unless we are willing to give up something, we also have to be willing to accept the additional costs that it is going to bear. So we need to keep in mind what our priorities are.
I, you know, that was a, a great point that you made, and if you could bring up what you would cut also. And I didn't even think about it, but when you just mentioned, or Dr. Baker had mentioned, phased out, if we could have, you know, the suggestions of the programs that were going to be phased out for the vision to bring through the vision, the programs that we would phase out and bring that back to us, maybe that'll give us a, a starting point, you know? And so that might be a solution, as this school board member, to come up with a solution to find savings, because I don't really believe in the word "cut," but to find savings. If we're going to phase out programs, what would those programs look like? And if that could be brought back to us, then that would kind of give us a working document to go on. And, but anyway, thank you. Might be a suggestion. Thanks.
Just to answer you, I said that I was, I recognize that being competitive with salaries, implementing the Evergreen Study, and fulfilling mental health needs, we were going to have a, a gap. So that's why I said no one pointed out where they would avoid the gap. So it seems like we're all in concurrence that we want to support a needs-based budget this year. So I thought that was a great thing, after the comments, that we are all on the same page there. So. That will bring us to item seven, the approval and discussion of the school board's 2019 legislative priorities. And because we all get our, our Virginia School Board Association emails on a regular basis and, and read those through, we're, we're very current on a weekly basis on the updates and the legislative needs of the school boards and where their support lies. So every year in, at the Virginia School Board Association Conference, they finalize or adjust the priorities based from year to year, but they're ongoing all year, and since we stay current on our readings, these are just basically review, there's only a couple of changes here versus last year. So this should go pretty quickly for discussion. But does anybody have anything under item one, budget and funding? There's four missions that we have.
Chair, are we, are we going to approve this tonight? Is that the intent?
Yes.
Should we make a motion?
I'm just going to make a motion.
Before we discuss?
Okay.
Motion to approve the legislative priorities.
Oh, second.
Motion by Ms. Shelley, second, and Mr. Braswell to approve the 2019 school board legislative priorities. So what does anybody have, anything under item one, budget and funding, that they would like to point out, add to, agree with, make a point to, strongly agree with?
That was, excuse me, that was discussed, I believe, at the ESP itself, and there was a, a motion made to adopt them at the, at the organizational level already about these. So what we're doing essentially is to approve something that we are already committed to, if I, in my view, anyway.
Well, we, every year, Mr. Blaine, we, as a county, adopt them because we can make changes. In the prior years, we've taken some off for our focus.
The essence of my, of my comment is that we should just vote for it, and I think we're ready to, to make the vote.
Okay. Is everybody ready? You don't want to point out anything?
Yeah, well, no. Are we going category by category?
I just was discussing it category by category, but Mr. Blaine suggested we don't need to discuss it, we can just vote.
I'd like to discuss it, actually.
Okay. Ms. Phelps.
So.
I just thought it'd be easier to go category by category, but evidently.
That's what I thought.
Madam Chair, I could like to make a point. Would we allow those that have an unreadiness to address the unreadiness instead of going through each line, and then that way we could save some time.
Okay. So, Ms. Phelps, if you are the only one that has a question, you may address.
Yeah, I do. I, I have the, the question about the praxis. What is that? I guess that's category, ba, 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 two, probably like the third bullet, where it talks about the praxis. From my understanding, correct me if I'm wrong, Carol or staff, there are three chances to pass the praxis.
As far as the employees and needing to pass praxis for licensure purposes.
Yes.
As far as I know, there's not a cutoff. They have to pass within a three-year period, which is the length of the probationary license.
And so this just is asking us not to, what, to not have a timeframe or to not?
No, what this is doing is, it's.
I don't have that in front of me.
No, what, what this is doing is, we have, we have teachers, just like we have students, that sometimes do not test well, yet they're doing an outstanding job in the classroom. And so what it does is it gives the local school division the flexibility to not lose a good teacher due to the, the praxis standard, and thereby, you know, continue to make the shortage of high-quality teachers even worse for some local school divisions. So it simply gives the flexibility, if you have a high-performing teacher who's unable to pass a praxis within that window, to, one, have more time to successfully complete it, but not lose their job in the process, and to be able to continue on as long as they are maintaining a proficient performance level.
Right. Well, thank you for explaining that. And the dual enrollment, does the local college, do they set their cost already? Or is it state or the local colleges?
Currently, there is, is some flexibility, and I think what the concern is, is there is, there are deliberations right now among the, the state-level council for community colleges to increase the rate for dual enrollment across the board, which would be detrimental to many school divisions, including ours, but especially those who, students would not be able to bear that cost, nor the school division to pick up the additional cost. So this is just part of trying to keep that more of a local decision instead of an across-the-board tuition increase.
I think my, oh, sorry. Go ahead.
You haven't, you're not done?
Oh, I thought somebody else was, sorry about that. And the next one I want to talk about was the student discipline, and that was in, I thought we're going by these by numbers, but I guess I'll have to go to their, number three, the student discipline. SEPS supports a position that Code Virginia be amended to eliminate. SCPS supports a position that Code Virginia be amended to eliminate the requirement in VA Code twenty-two-point-one-dash-two-seven-point-three, that principals report to law enforcement any act that may constitute a misdemeanor offense. Um, is that, right now, what does the code say? The code says, do you know what the code says right now? Is it that we have to report, principals have to report to...
It does.
...the sheriff's department or authorities? That was my interpretation from reading the code when I did research on this, um, that my interpretation was that the code already is stated that principals need to alert the authorities for misdemeanors that occur on school property. That's my interpretation. So this would eliminate it, so, okay, so you take a principal who's not required to share misdemeanors with the police, so, or the sheriff's department. So it's taking the law enforcement out of misdemeanors that happen on our school property. So I, I think to myself, to ensure a layer of, uh, safety and to protect our students and our staff, um, I wouldn't wanna eliminate this. And to give ownness, uh, we fall short on our end. At least we'll have the law enforcement there to either own up and, and be a partner with us. So, so I don't agree with that. Um, and I have another question.
Ms. Phelps, just so you know on that part, the SROs do report it. So now the principals don't have to, it stays only in law enforcement hands.
Right, and that's why I'd like for the principals to have to report it, for the safety of my child and the staff in the schools of a misdemeanor. Because, um, somebody gives somebody drugs, and they have allergic reaction, or if somebody slips somebody else some drugs, is that a misdemeanor? What constitutes as a misdemeanor? So, but what I'm saying is...
But the SRO would be doing it.
A layer, a layer of accountability, and this is for me, having kids in the school, and I also wanted to know if anybody reached out to the sheriff to get his thought and his consult on it. So would maybe have our local sheriff give us his thoughts on it as a governing body here. So, um, did anybody, do we know if anybody did?
It's come up in years in the past, and the Sheriff's Association supports keeping, what it's saying is, I still don't understand, it's not gonna not get reported. Now they're just taking it out of an educator's hand, cause the principal's not law enforcement. So now they're saying that it's up to the SRO or the SSO. It's only law enforcement's job now. So now they don't need an educator being a law enforcement officer. They're letting the principal stay, the principal, and they're gonna have the law enforcement officer that's already in the school make the decision on whether or not they're reporting the misdemeanor.
Thanks for your interpretation, and I have my interpretation, so maybe, I'd like to table this one.
Mr. Lynn is here, he can, he can...
Yeah, if you could come up here and explain it, but...
Right. Um, I'll just share, and again, school boards welcome to take any of these priorities off that they choose. These are aligned as much with, uh, VAS, um, recommendations as they are VSBA, just to clarify that. I, I think there's also, this has been on for multiple years, and I believe it has to do with a concern about over-reporting as well. Not just who's reporting, but a concern that there are offenses that have absolutely nothing to do with safety, but they fall under a potential misdemeanor offense, and the concern that law enforcement is being inundated with reports that maybe they don't need to have from school officials. But Mr. Lynn can certainly maybe speak more to that if he's familiar with it. We're just going over, Mr. Lynn, a legislative priority that's aligned with the VAS and VSBA, uh, about, uh, the Code of Virginia being amended to eliminate the requirement that principals report to law enforcement any act that may constitute a misdemeanor offense. Are you familiar with that?
I am not, sir.
Okay. Then, again, it's up to the board if you wanna table it, um, but I, I think it's coming, we have two different perspectives on it. One, that everything and anything should be reported to law enforcement, that could be any type of criminal offense. And then we have the perspective of over-reporting. I, I would say to the board, if you wanna take that off, I don't think it's gonna be detrimental to your overall legislative priorities.
Mr. Braswell.
I, I, are, are legislative priorities, we're voting on them as a block, or are we voting on them individually? If we're voting on them as a block, uh, does it require, uh, a unanimous vote?
No.
Okay. Then, then Madam Chair, I think it's, we have a motion on the floor, and second, I think we should just vote on the merits of the, uh, the amendment.
Okay. Do you have a second? I mean, you're calling point of order. Okay. Or you?
I, I think we have a motion on the floor, and it's been properly seconded, unless someone has a, a substitute motion.
This was the discussion part, so she was just discussing.
Yeah, I'm just saying, yeah. But I, I, I wanted clarification. Is this, is this something that we vote on in total, or are we voting on them individually?
Correct, we vote in total. Unless someone makes a alternate motion to take something off.
And I wanna make a substitute motion to take that off.
I'll second that.
Which, which, just that one?
Just that one, yes.
I'll second.
Okay. Now, I wouldn't call that a, I think you're making a, a motion, not a substitute motion. So we have to vote on that first, there's a second. So, all those in favor of approving the legislative priorities without student discipline, section three, the first one, Spotsylvania County School Boards amended to eliminate the requirement in principals' report to law enforcement, et cetera.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Four-two, minus you.
I just didn't hear Ms. Shelley. You're right.
She was a no.
She was an aye.
I said she was an aye. Mr. Twig did not, I, I heard correctly. So, the motion carrying two changes, a motion, five to two. So we're done, right? We have now approved all these legislative priorities with the exemption of Article Three, Section One. Correct?
Correct.
All right. And those will be used in our, are we, did you text me back and I didn't read it? Did I have the right date and time? Yes, I like it. So, those will be used in our handouts for our legislative reception on Monday night at six P.M. So now we have our closed session.
We gotta read, we gotta read, uh, go into closed session first.
Be it resolved that the board conduct a closed meeting for the following purposes: consideration of student disciplinary appeals as permitted by section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven-a-two of the Code of Virginia. Session, I'm gonna do certification of the closed meeting. Whereas the Spotsylvania County School Board has convened a closed meeting on this day pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of the Freedom, Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas section two-point-two-dash-thirty-seven-eleven of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such a closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Spotsylvania County School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under this chapter, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered in the meeting. Motion to certify?
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
Motion by Dr. Meyer, second by Mr. Blaine. Roll call vote, starting with Ms. Shelley.
Shelley, aye.
Meyer, aye.
Phelps, aye.
Braswell, aye.
Twig, aye.
Blaine, aye.
Grant, aye. Motion carries seven-zero. There is no motion from the closed session, so that brings us to, we are adjourned, if there are no exemptions.
Move to adjourn.
Granted.
She is six o'clock, huh?